Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the June 5, 2023 business meeting of the Bloomington City Council. So appreciate seeing so many new and familiar faces in the room here tonight. We'll start off our meeting as we always do. If you can, please join us in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, terrific. I am obviously not Mayor Tim Bussie. I am filling in while he is away this evening. Might be a little bit, little bit of bumper bowling. We'll zig and we'll zag. We'll get to the pins eventually. So appreciate you putting up with me. So to start off here, so we don't need to call the roll if everybody in person, right? Perfect. So our first item of business is approval of the agenda. We've got a full agenda here this evening. We've got some fantastic proclamations up top, appointment of Planning Commission members, as well as young adult members to various boards and commissions. We have 11 items on our consent agenda tonight, and we have, it looks like, one resolution and three public hearings regarding various city code amendments and a privately initiated city code text amendment. We'll also, in Section 5 organizational business, be taking a look at potential modifications to the 2023 Planning Commission work plan based off some discussion items that had come up at previous meetings. So council, I'll ask any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda. Okay. If not, I will look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, and second by Councilmember Delisandro. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? And that passes 6-0. Okay. So we next move on to our consent agenda. I believe Councilmember Nelson, did you have consent tonight? Oh, I'm sorry. Introductory items. I skipped over a thing. This is the first zig in our way to the pins. There we go. Exactly. We will start off. We have three proclamations, first for Pride Month, second for Juneteenth, and another for Home Ownership Month, and I will swing on down to the podium. So we will start off tonight with a proclamation regarding Pride Month. LGBTQIA+ Pride Month is celebrated every June, annually every June. The month recognizes the positive contributions of individuals who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, and it encourages the inclusiveness of our community and raises awareness of issues featuring the, facing the LGBTQIA+ community. I'm particularly excited about this one among all the great proclamations we have tonight, because I think it goes to underscore the work this community has done to show the rest of our region, the rest of this country, that Bloomington is a place where everybody can put down roots, thrive, and feel like they belong. So without further ado. Whereas, the month of June 2023 is designated as Pride Month and recognizes the discrimination and violence individuals who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, LGBTQIA+, are subjected to, and raises up and promotes self-affirmation, dignity, equal rights, and increases the visibility of the LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas, the city of Bloomington is committed to being inclusive, equitable, and welcoming of all individuals along the natural spectrum of human identity and sexual orientation, and recognizes that we are a diverse community enriched by this diversity, and including the contributions of LGBTQIA+ community has made and continues to make. And whereas, the LGBTQIA+ rights movement continues to this day, and while there has been remarkable progress towards acceptance and equality in recent years, members of the LGBTQIA+ community in the United States and around the world still face an unacceptable level of discrimination and violence. So we must remain vigilant and push back against those who seek to roll back our progress. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Acting Mayor Patrick Martin, do hereby proclaim June 2023 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the city of Bloomington, and call upon the people of Bloomington to turn back discrimination and prejudice everywhere it exists, and commemorate the courageous individuals who have fought and continue to fight for the rights of LGBTQIA+ people. And I believe we have representatives from Twin Cities Pride here. If anybody wanted to come up and say a few words from the planning team?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I really appreciate, my name is Andy Otto. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm the Executive Director of Twin Cities Pride. We have had the fortune this year to help Bloomington get their pride back to the citizens and help them expand it over the next few years. And so we're very excited to be here, and I appreciate you all. I appreciate the city of Bloomington so much for this. As you stated, the hate against the LGBTQ community continues to grow, and as President, former President Obama just said, people need to be looking to Minnesota as the right way to do it, instead of the wrong way to do it. And so I appreciate you all as we continue to move forward and make this a refuge state. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate it. All righty. And our second critical proclamation tonight is in recognition of Juneteenth. So Juneteenth is derived by combining June and 19th, and it is a federal and state of Minnesota holiday. It's celebrated on the anniversary of the order on June 19, 1865, proclaiming the freedom of enslaved Africans in Galveston, Texas, a full two years after President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation and accompanying executive order on September 22 of 1863. President Biden signed Juneteenth National Independence Day Act on June 17 of '21, making it the 11th federal holiday. And on February 3, 2023, Governor Tim Walz signed a bill establishing Juneteenth as the official state holiday it is here in Minnesota. And again, much like I mentioned with the previous proclamation, I hope that this is just one of many things folks across our region can look at to say Bloomington is a place that takes racial equity seriously, whether that's racial equity business plans we put for our work internally, whether that's declaring racism as a public health crisis. I hope this, this proclamation serves as a symbol of the work we are doing to make this community a place where everybody can belong. So whereas, in 1619 was the beginning stages of the institution of chattel slavery in America, and represents a landmark in the long history of slavery in European colonies. And whereas, forced migration and subsequent enslavement of Africans in America emerged as a national institution, directly influencing the economies and wealth of both southern and northern states, and was integral in establishing the United States as a world economic power. And whereas, on September 22, 1862, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation and executive order, freeing those enslaved in southern states effective January 1, 1863. And whereas, due to intentional defiance by southern state slave owners, Union soldiers had to enforce the president's order of freeing those enslaved two and a half years after the Declaration on June 19, 1865, in Galveston, Texas. And whereas, through intentional systems of oppression such as sharecropping, Jim Crow, redlining, and mass incarceration, the disenfranchisement of black bodies continues and persists today. And whereas, despite those grievous hardships, African, African-Americans, both during periods of enslavement and today, make significant contributions to every segment of American society. And whereas, June 19, called Juneteenth by combining June and 19, is recognized as the end of chattel slavery in America, and having been celebrated for over 150 years by the African-American community, holds special meaning. And whereas, yet to be realized is the full promise of that day. Therefore, Juneteenth is a reminder of the continued work necessary to ensure an equitable United States for future generations. And whereas, each year and throughout the year, we recognize and affirm the value of black lives and the immeasurable contributions of African-Americans to this country and to the city of Bloomington. And therefore, I, Acting Mayor Patrick Martin, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2023, as Juneteenth in Bloomington, and invite all to join our inaugural Juneteenth celebration on Monday, June 19, 2023, at Kennedy High School from 11 to 4. And we are honored to have leaders from across the region and our community joining us today. Mr. Jordan Lee, co-organizer of Twin Cities' Juneteenth Celebration, Pastor John Pastor Sam, pastors of Church of New Life Christian Ministries here in Bloomington, and Marvis Kilgore, Director of Normandale Community College Certified Program. So Mr. Lee, if you wouldn't mind starting us off.
My name is Lee Jordan. I'm the Midwest State Director for the National Juneteenth, and it's my pleasure and my honor to be here to speak upon Juneteenth, because looking at the list of other proclamations being made makes you to understand that none are free until we all are free. So we want to thank you, Mayor, and for the opportunity to bring the history of Juneteenth. And while I'm talking about history, we talk about Galveston, Texas, and General Ranger, but at the same time, there were 19,000 US color troops that were there too. Juneteenth is part of their story as well, and that's my job to make sure that gets told. So thank you for that opportunity to do so.
Hi, I'm Pastor Joe from Church of New Life, located here in 8600 Bloomington Avenue. For us, Juneteenth is a great opportunity for African-Americans in the community of Bloomington to share their experiences that they've had in the city of Bloomington. We've had the great opportunity with the city of Bloomington and their diversity and inclusion, and just the staff who have helped us so far with the planning and organization, and seeing how much progress has been made for the African-American community in Bloomington. Went from a point where you almost didn't know that there was African-Americans in Bloomington to seeing them represented and leadership, from the police to diversity and inclusion, to HRA and all these other areas. And it's a great opportunity for us to share the dream and vision of having a multi-ethnic community, working together, celebrating each other every day, not just, you know, being stuck in our groups and separated, but coming together and celebrating. We want this Juneteenth to be about everybody coming together and just showing how great an example the city of Bloomington is in this nation. Thank you.
My name is Pastor Sam Nero. I pastor Church of New Life Christian Ministry on 8600 Bloomington Avenue. My goal has always been, my dream has been to have a Juneteenth celebration. My heart was always being, how do we get community, the government, and the churches together so we can celebrate? I think that is the really solid foundation that we need. And when we get those things, so I went to the pastors and said, these are things we need to do. And I'm so grateful, and so thank you, that Bloomington decided to say, okay, let's do it. Let's put it together, whatever it costs, whatever the matter, whatever the fight, let's do it. And that makes me just so joyful to worship in Bloomington, to celebrate in Bloomington, to have a lot of joy as we move into this place. And I do believe as we, on June 19, I'm looking for joy, peace, happiness, and all of those things. That's what we do when we're free. That's what we do when we celebrate each other. That's what we do when we reach out and say, I'm so glad to see you. And that's where I am, and I'm so joyful. This dream of mine is coming alive. Thank you, Bloomington, and thank you for all that support us. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Marvis Kilgore, the facilitator for this committee. And, you know, I'm just really excited about all the work that we've done so far. You've heard the historical context of, of Juneteenth. So Erica, introduce yourself, please.
Thank you, Marvis. I'm Erica Coleman, and I am part of the committee for the Juneteenth Planning Committee and the Chair for the Bloomington Black Employee Network, the Employee Resource Group that is also helping to support this event.
So we'll take the next 30, 45 seconds or so to tell you what to expect, you know, when you come out for Juneteenth. So we have vendors, we have entertainers, we have special artists and special guests coming along. Erica?
And we have food, right? Because you can't have an event without food.
Delicious food.
Delicious food, local Bloomington businesses, as well as other community businesses, but we have food, and we will have different educational opportunities that are also sponsored and provided by Normandale Community College.
So join us as we come together, as we celebrate Juneteenth, the first ever in Bloomington. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Fantastic. But Acting Mayor Martin, we have a special guest here with us today. Come on up.
Hello, hello.
Who wants to help and celebrate Juneteenth. And so we just wanted to acknowledge Norm, the mascot from Normandale, who decided this show off. I'm also going to invite all the members of the Juneteenth Committee to just come up for a quick group photo.
Perfect. I think I have those same shorts.
Do you do a picture too, Mike?
I'm coming.
And then maybe I'll jump in and you do a couple too.
Yes, please.
Okay, one, two, three.
Team effort. I've never done this before, but I think I got about five or six.
You know, and while we're at it, if the Pride Group wouldn't mind, we'd love to have you all up for a photo as well. I'm sorry I didn't offer a couple of minutes ago. Thank you so much, and we appreciate you being here. Yeah, oh, please. Yeah, and if you'd like to start us off with a few words. I'm sorry, I should have offered a minute ago.
No, that's okay. Thank you. My name's Anita Smith, and I'm on the Bloomington Pride Committee. Our Pride celebration is going to be here at Civic Plaza on September 10. So save the date. We'll be happy to have everyone with us.
Which one are you doing first?
I'm doing them all.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Yes.
All righty. Okay, and our final proclamation tonight is for Home Ownership Month. So June is National Home Ownership Month, a time to recognize the value that owning a home brings to families. It's a discussion that council has ongoing, and especially items recently. And that's true here in Bloomington and in neighborhoods across America. Home ownership strategies, purposeful homeownership strategies urge governments, employers, lenders, insurers, and nonprofits to undertake efforts that will build the capacity of local actors to foster affordable homeownership in their own communities, promoting homeownership opportunities that are easily accessible, and pathways to employment. So overall, I'm sure as we've all seen the headlines about a housing crisis that only seems to get worse, a headline that has been copy-pasted for 15 years, I'm proud that the city of Bloomington has taken concrete steps in the right direction, and that we are willing to vocally be on the forefront of the movement to make sure everybody has a home where they can put down roots in our community. So Home Ownership Month, June 2023. Whereas, in 1995, National Home Ownership Week began as a strategy of President William Clinton's administration to increase homeownership across the nation. And whereas, in 2002, President George W. Bush expanded the observance to the entire month of June. And whereas, homeownership is a major source of generational wealth for many Americans, and is an essential part of the American dream. And whereas, during Home Ownership Month, we recognize the value that owning a home brings to individuals, households, and communities across America. And whereas, by observing Home Ownership Month, we acknowledge the importance of housing, whether owning, renting, or aspiring to own or rent. And whereas, through the Housing and Redevelopment Authority in and for the city of Bloomington, known as HRA, current residents, and those desiring to become residents, can access resources and housing stability and pathways to homeownership. And whereas, each year and throughout the year, we will foster homeownership creation and preservation opportunities in the city of Bloomington. And whereas, to support our mission of cultivating an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be, journey to homeownership workshops are offered monthly in Somali, English, as well as homestretch first-time homebuyer education classes. Therefore, I, Acting Mayor Patrick Martin, do hereby proclaim June 2023 as Home Ownership Month in Bloomington, Minnesota. And I know we have representatives from our HRA here. Thank you so much for being here. Anybody that would like to say a few words?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Martin. Erica Coleman, I am the administrator for the HRA. I am joined by Chair Houhim for our HRA Board, and by Commissioner Mueller from our HRA Board. And we just want to say that, we just wanted to highlight the importance of homeownership through the proclamation and acknowledging June as National Home Ownership Month, but specifically as Home Ownership Month here in Bloomington, as it aligns with the work and the focus and the leadership that we have here in the city through Bloomington tomorrow together, and that we will focus on making this an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be, but also where people can be. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Mueller, Commissioner on the HRA. I've only been on the board six months, and I can honestly sincerely say I am very impressed by the work that the city of Bloomington has done on affordable housing, and on the whole spectrum of housing, of homeownership, trying to get less represented populations into stable housing. So I'm very much looking forward to the next years that I'm on the board, but the city of Bloomington has much to be proud of.
Excellent. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Did you want to do a photo?
Same shit also on the board.
Real quick.
Perfect.
Oh, you want to?
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, yes, thank you so much. Okay, so continuing on with our introductory items, we have item number 2.4, Planning Commission Appointments. It looks like we've got our ballot sheets in front of us here. And just a point of clarification for the city attorney, I know the process of recent years has been putting together a subgroup of the city council that conducts interviews with applicants. I believe that happened a couple, few weeks ago now. And out of that, four candidates were recommended for appointment with specific recommendations to which seat to fill. Is that, if we were to pursue those four, could that be done in one motion, or would that require four separate motions?
Acting Mayor and members, let me just pull up the proposed motion here and see. Yes, I think the key to this is you've got different terms. So for convenience of the recording secretary, perhaps take the first two, and then the second two, because the first two end in '26, and then the second two end in '25.
Okay.
Make a friendly request for that. Matt would probably appreciate that. He's nodding.
Perfect. Excellent.
Yes, and Paige, in the council packet, Mr. Mayor, contains recommendations to specific terms.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Thank you so much. So it looks like the recommendation, again, just for information out of the subgroup, was Cocteau and Currie for the term ending in 2026, and Albrecht and Brown for the term ending in 2025, just for reference. So I guess in terms of process, I will open it up to council. Do we prefer going through the round-by-round vote? Or I know we've got, we all received the detailed recommendations from that subgroup that interviewed the candidates. What do you think? Councilmember Delisandro.
Whoops, there you go. Hi. Acting Mayor Martin, I'd be fine with voting them in a block if that's comfortable for everyone. So I can happily make the motion. Would you prefer, what would you prefer? Anybody not prefer that?
Councilmember Delisandro, yeah, if you wouldn't mind making the motion, we'll start with the candidates for the terms ending 630-26.
Okay, great. So I believe what we said was, I am making a motion to appoint Cocteau and Currie to a term of 7/1/23 to 6/30/26. Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Delisandro, a second from Councilmember Carter. All those in favor of the first two appointments as stated, signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? And that motion passes 6-0. And Councilmember Delisandro, would you mind tackling the second motion as well?
No, I think I have it right. We said Albrecht and Brown. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So I am making a motion to appoint Brown and Albrecht to a term of 7/1/23 to 6/30/2025. Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Delisandro, a second from Councilmember Carter. All those in favor of the appointments for the terms ending in June of 2025 as stated, signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? And that passes 6-0 as well. Okeydoke. Moving on to the appointment of young members to the Human Rights Commission. I do not believe we had an interview process for this one, but I had seen we had four applicants for two open seats, and it's my understanding those two open seats have the same term component. Okay.
Mayor, that's correct. Looks like both terms for the young adult members are from September 1, 2023 to August 31, 2024.
Okay, fantastic. Yeah, Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Just clarifying that, there seems that one person applied for two commissions. I'm just confirming it's the same person. So it'd be Hanin Curti applied for both the HRC and the Park Commission?
Mayor and Councilmember Carter, that is correct. I confirmed just by, well, by looking at the addresses that it is in the packet, that it is in fact the same individual.
And then did the other person who applied to the Parks Commission remove their application?
Mayor and Councilmember Carter, the other applicant for the Park Art and Recreation Commission was not a Bloomington resident, so they were deemed ineligible.
Oh, okay. Thank you for confirming that.
Okeydoke. So I, forgive me, I, there's a rotation that we usually go through to begin the voting on these. I can't remember where we left off in that rotation last time.
I randomized and provided on your voting sheet. So it's actually on the back of your first page, you'll see for all these next three, for the HRC, Park, and Sustainability, a randomized order for two rounds of nominations.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Mr. Acting Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question?
Councilmember Delisandro.
Can I assume that, because Dwayne and I have the same initials, except they're backwards, that DL is Dwayne and LD is Luna?
That's correct.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
The beef starts early at tonight's council meeting. Excellent. Thank you so much. Well, it looks like for round one for the HRC youth member vote, we have Councilmember Loman up to bat, and with two seats to fill, I'm thinking two votes on this one.
Yep. I'll go ahead and I'll say Bennett Childs and Hanan Curti.
Councilmember Carter, I've got next.
I'm going to go with Aleah Upshaw and Bennett Childs.
I will go with Childs and Upshaw.
All right, Councilmember Mu.
I will go with Theodore Strowman Campbell and Curti.
Okay, Councilmember Delisandro.
I'm also with Strowman Campbell and Curti.
All righty. And I will vote for Childs and Curti. And I will vote for Childs and Kurti. Okay. So after the first round, it looks like we have two candidates that have four votes, which should be enough to get there. I guess I'll suggest we move ahead with those two appointments. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Acting Mayor. Just a quick point, Kurti is the only viable applicant for Park Arts and Recreation, and is it reasonable and/or prudent to appoint this individual to two places?
That's what was the point I made earlier at the beginning.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out, Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah.
Mayor Protam and members, perhaps you'd like to rerun the votes?
Let's do that.
Get out my blue pen.
Sure, that's what I get.
We got the thumbs up on a rerun. Perfect. All righty, so on the second round here, I'm just going to go with youth member round two box that's been provided since it's unmarked. And on this round two, I've got Councilmember DeLisandro is up first.
Thank you. I'm going to go with Strum and Campbell and Upshaw.
And I will go with Strum and Campbell and Childs.
Okay.
I'll go with Childs and Upshaw.
Childs and Upshaw.
I guess it's me then. See, I'll go with Childs, and then I'm going to go with Strum.
All righty. And I will go with Childs and Upshaw. And we've got two with four or more votes here. So I will hear a motion for appointing these young adults to the young adult seats on the Human Rights Commission.
I'd be happy to make that motion.
Thank you.
See here, I'll move to appoint Bennett Childs as a young adult member of the Human Rights Commission to a term of 9/1/23 to 8/31/24.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Lowman and a second from Councilmember Nelson to make the appointments as stated. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes. And again, thank you, congratulations to the folks that were appointed and...
I only didn't want to...
Oh, and a second one. Congratulations to our first appointee and the one soon to be. Councilmember Lowman.
Be happy to make that motion. Mayor, I'll move to appoint Aleah Upshaw as a young adult member to the Human Rights Commission to a term of 9/1/23 to 8/31/24.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, Councilmember Lowman with the motion and Councilmember Carter with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes 6-0. Okay. So that moves us to the appointment of the young adult member to the Parks Arts and Recreation Commission. We have one applicant for one seat. I would be comfortable hearing a motion to make the appointment as stated, unless somebody would like to run through the votes.
No, Mayor, I'd be happy to make that motion.
Perfect.
Mayor, I'll move to appoint Hanan Kurti as a young adult member of the Parks Arts Recreation Commission to a term of 9/1/23 to 8/31/24.
Perfect. And a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Lowman and a second from Councilmember Carter to make the appointment to the young adult seat on Parks Arts and Recreation. As stated, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? That carries 6-0 as well. Okay, and that brings us to the last of our introductory items, the appointment of the young adult member to the Sustainability Commission. It looks like we had four applications for two seats with the same term there as well. With our sustainability round one, it looks like we have Councilmember Lowman is up first.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and appoint my colleague that I've served with for the last year, Owen Loken, and then Abby Childs.
And Councilmember DeLisandro?
My apologies.
You're good.
It is random. I'll go with Childs and Loken.
Childs and Loken.
Loken and Ahmed.
Okay, and Councilmember Nelson?
Childs and Loken.
And I will go with Childs and Loken as well. So we have two folks for appointment to the Sustainability Commission. Do I hear a motion for our first appointee, Abby Childs?
Happy to make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I move to appoint Owen Loken as young adult member to the Sustainability Commission to a term of 9/1/23 to 8/31/24.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All righty, we have a motion from Councilmember DeLisandro and a second from Councilmember Lowman to appoint Owen Loken to the youth seat on Sustainability. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that carries. And we have one more appointment for Abby Childs, if somebody wants to make a motion.
Let me do it?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. I will move to appoint Abby Childs to our young adult, as a young adult member to the Sustainability Commission to a term of 9/1/23 to 8/31/24.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember DeLisandro and a second from Councilmember Lowman to appoint Abby Childs. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that carries 6-0.
Mayor? Did I just mention that our Sustainability Commissioner is actually here with his parents? I just wanted to point him out there, and it came all this way.
That's appreciated. Congratulations and thanks for your service. And I'll also point out our new HRC member, Aleah Upshaw, is here as well. So thank you for your work, that's appreciated. Okay, get my paperwork in order here.
Acting Mayor?
Yes.
Should we also then point out our new Planning Commissioner, Mr. Curry?
We do have the Planning Commissioner here as well, thank you so much. Thank you very much, I'm sorry I missed you a minute ago. All righty, fantastic. We will move on to the consent agenda. As I mentioned, there is 11 items on tonight's consent agenda. Councilmember Nelson, I believe you had consent?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have heard about a hold for item 310. I have not heard about holds on any other items. Does anybody have a hold? All right, we have a hold on 3.1. Anything else? Okay, then I will move approval of 3.2 through 3.9 and 3.11.
Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, there's a note on the agenda that item 3.11 should be pulled from consent as well, because it's got a different motion than was listed in the packet.
Thank you for the reminder. So we will do 3.2 through 3.9. I'll move 3.2 through 3.9.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Nelson, a second from Councilmember DeLisandro to move the consent agenda items. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that carries 6-0. So we jump to item 3.1.
I believe that's Councilmember Lowman.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. So I held this resolution to award 2023 Olson Schools Safe Routes to School Site Improvement Project, really just to give staff the opportunity. I know there's a lot of activity from a traffic standpoint that's taking place on 102nd Street, and I just think it's prudent that the public understand and know what we have, you know, been doing in the past and what we're continuing to do as a council and as a staff around that area. So I wonder if staff could talk about, just a little bit about this improvement stuff? I know there's been some things that have taken place on 102nd Street, if they wanted to, you know, talk about that. I'd certainly be open to that, but I just want to make sure that the public understands and knows that, you know, we take this area, you know, we have a lot of young people that are in this area, in this corridor, and a lot of residents that live in this area, and we take this area very seriously, but we want to be thoughtful. I know that this had come before our former council, and they had made the decision to keep the road the way that it is, and I know that we're kind of reconsidering and looking at different ways to take steps to make those changes. So I don't know, Mayor, if staff wants to comment on that.
Yeah, our Public Works Director, Carl Keel, thank you so much for being here and line us. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Acting Mayor and Council. As I think the council is aware, this is a traffic issue that's raised quite a bit of concern as of late, but also has over the years. So this has been an item that's come before previous councils on two occasions. And like most issues, there's usually two or three sides to each issue, and the council in both those instances decided not to proceed with the recommendations that staff had forwarded for some changes along 102nd. We are very much aware of all the details of 102nd Street and watch it very carefully, and our staff has many opinions about different ways that things could be addressed. We would be happy to come and present those again to the council if the council was interested, and then we would take your direction if you'd want us to proceed or not.
Any additional questions, comments, council?
Mayor, I'll just say one thing. Obviously, that piece I can save to the policy, since that's not necessarily germane to this piece, I want to thank staff for just reminding the public about the history of this particular area, even though some of us, actually, most of us here weren't here during that period of time when that took place, and I hope that we can have that conversation during our policy and updates. Please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember. All right, no further questions or comments, I will look for a motion on the resolution.
I'd be happy to make that motion, Mayor. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution to accept the bid to award the contract for the 2023 Olson School Safe Routes to School Site Improvement Project to New Look Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $638,088.50, and approve various contract changes, up to 12% of the original contract amount, for a total project construction authorization of $714,659.12.
Second.
All right, a motion by Councilmember Lowman, a second by Councilmember Nelson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that carries 6-0 as well. And jumping over to item 3.10, the resolution regarding the Port Authority and South Loop Development Funds for Purchases.
Yeah, thank you, Acting Mayor. That was Councilmember DeLisandro that wanted to hold that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Quick point of order, if I can, Acting Mayor Martin, if we could ask someone from staff to be available to talk about 3.6 in the updates? I didn't have any reason to hold it, but relevant to that discussion, I'd like to have somebody available for us when we get to five. Yeah, thanks. Okay. Yeah, so this, 3.10, so this happened really fast, and it was, in my opinion, and I think I share this with other council members, kind of a surprise to the council as a whole. I believe, you know, I never like to be in a situation where I'm reading an article in the Strib to get my news about council. Like, that's just not how it should happen. And so what I'd like to understand is a little bit more detail about exactly the, to the extent possible, I know that some of the details of the conversation were closed session, but what I'd like to understand is specifically why we are being opportunistic about this particular properties, potentially purchasing this property, when we know less than three weeks from now, we may win Expo 2027, and those dollars are fenced to the Expo site as well, and we might have to make a choice about whether or not we use funds in that fund for this versus that. They're not connected, as I understand them today, at least from what, again, publicly we know. And I, so I'm confused as to why we're jumping on this right now, and would love some clarification on the reason for it to be here at this moment, and also why the council as a whole wasn't maybe brought up to speed on the discussion, given its potential, the size and scope of its potential impact to both the South Loop Development Fund as well as our plans for Expo. Thanks.
And to speak to that, I believe we have our Assistant Port Authority Administrator, Jason Smith. Thank you for being here, Jason.
Thank you, Acting Mayor and councilmembers. Correct, this was an item that came very quickly. And just to give a quick preview of what I can state, we have been in negotiations with this, the broker and this property owner, since 2018, as far as deciding, is it the right time to purchase this property? Is this property owner willing to sell? During those conversations, kind of their price has fluctuated, with which staff, when we were evaluating it, working with our assessing division, of assuming at that time, was it the right price, is it not? Within the last month, we've had conversations with the broker and were informed of some decisions that they were looking to make into the future. And at that time, looking at the valuation of the property and the price, we thought as staff that it was the opportune time to move forward to see if this was an action with which the Port Authority Commission was willing to undertake. During those closed sessions, we did talk about the parameters of what the negotiations would be with regards to purchasing this price. During those negotiations, we came out of that closed session, and the Port Authority Commission at that time did authorize staff to start to enter into those negotiations based on what was discussed in there. As far as the various funds, the Port Authority is looking at three different funds to use for the purchase of this property if a negotiated purchase agreement can be reached. One of the sources of funds is the South Loop Development Fund, with which we are here before you today. That is a capital fund. It has been used in the past for projects specific to the South Loop, as well as to attain or to purchase property within the South Loop area. The last property that we purchased with these funds was the Interstate Diesel and Alpha Pairsels. That today is where the Hazelwood Restaurant is and the three hotels, the Element, the EC Marriott, and the Town Play Suites, as well as the SIC headquarters with their manufacturing, as well as their future expansion is where those facilities are. We have worked with our financial advisor in evaluating these three funds to determine what is the best option financially for the city as to which funds we should use. Their take in this analysis was to look at cash-on-hand funds, realizing that we do have potentially an Expo yes vote coming on June 21st. So Baker Tilly is our financial advisor. They have analyzed it, and within their purview, they believe during their financial analysis that the best use is to use cash on hand to date to move forward with this purchase. And if we do have a yes vote on Expo, we do have other funds with which we can look at to assist any projects if the city council or Port Authority would like to financially assist any Expo development.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Thanks for that helpful context. So do I assume, based on your commentary, that you believe at this point that we have the cash on hand in that fund to purchase this property?
Acting Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, that is correct. We would have cash on hand within that fund. So any cash-on-hand fund dollars, our CFO has reviewed, as well as Baker Tilly, our financial advisor.
Okay. I know you're going to have to walk a line here, and I'm not asking you for a number or anything like that. What I guess I'm asking is, it's in full with cash on hand? Or are there other levers we still have to consider in purchasing this property?
Mayor Protam and members, I would like to discourage Jason from presenting on that as I think that's getting too close to, fund balances are subject to data requests, and someone could request that and get that information if he answered the question.
Okay, that's fair. I appreciate that. Okay. I don't, I don't, I'm going to try to see if I can ask a different question without getting to any kind of specifics. Let me, let me ask this question. Is there an expectation that this purchase is independent of any potential Expo utilization? Like, it could go on its own path in terms of development, or what we want to do with it, or anything like that? It's not bound in any way? It's not bound in any way to that project?
Assistant City Manager Sable.
Thank you, acting mayor and Councilmember De La Sondra. Can I ask your question slightly differently?
Absolutely.
Would we want this property if Expo didn't exist? Is that the question you're asking? Is if Expo weren't real, would the city or the Port Authority still pursue this project?
No, actually, I feel confident that that question was asked and answered already since we've been pursuing this till 2018. What I'm, what I'm asking, because what I feel, forgive me if I'm overstating this, but I think what you're telling me is that you've been waiting to see if the price was right, and the price is right, and you want to act on it. That's a really, really, you know, baseline layman's way of commenting on it without saying anything. What I, what I want to understand is that, is that, will this move into Expo development should we win the Expo? Because that's what I don't want to necessarily commit to. And I'm trying to understand if, the opposite, I guess, of what you asked, which is, are you pursuing this because it's a good idea? Sure, great, whatever. Now we win Expo, what happens to this property? Is it still independently developed because we wanted to do it for a long time? Or have we decided to throw it into the Expo thing, is what I'm trying to get at? Yeah, thanks.
Acting Mayor, Councilmember De La Sondra, that is a great question. And overall, that's going to be dependent on the Port Authority as well as the Host Committee. So if the Host Committee, if they hire a developer, and during that, those conversations, the developer, they're looking for additional land, they would need to negotiate with the Port Authority to purchase that land to put that development on there. Subsequently, if the Host Committee says, we do not need that piece of property, what the Port Authority is able to do then is potentially leverage that property for any legacy use if we are awarded Expo. Where if someone is looking to take over an Expo building on the Ramada site with which the World Expo is slated to occur, they could look for a future expansion into this area on the Marriott property.
Okay, I think that answered my question.
Okay, excellent. And Councilmember Loman.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, I know we have a person that serves on that, on the Port Authority, if you're comfortable with what's been put forward. I'm not asking for any details at all, I just want to know your level of comfort. You were there, a trusted member of that body and of this body, just want to know where you sit on this.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I voted in support of the motion during the Port Authority meeting. I feel really confident that the staff have put it forward similarly. I mean, they've done a lot of thorough research. We have experts who are looking at this property, and I don't want to say anything to get me in trouble, but as was mentioned, I mean, these conversations have happened on and off again since 2018. And so I think it's a good opportunity for the city overall, if it were to move forward.
Thank you for that clarification. I've been aware of the stuff, you know, going on, so, and I wasn't too surprised myself, but, you know, here we are. Thank you for that clarification.
Excellent. And Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, acting mayor. Just a few questions here. When did the Port Authority begin negotiations with the seller? Not the 2008, but the most recent, or 18, sorry, the most recent negotiations?
Yeah, Mr. Schmidt.
Acting Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, we have been in conversations with the broker, I believe, since December. We've been having kind of ongoing conversations as to how their transactions have been going with regards to other parties and interest in the property, as well as kind of the intentions of the owner. During those conversations, I'd say we have gotten a little bit more serious in those talks within the last month and a half. But we, we did not put any formal offer or talk any specifics because we really didn't have any guidance to move forward from the commission. Since the meeting last Tuesday, we have submitted our first offer and purchase agreement, draft purchase agreement on Friday.
Okay. Second question, ultimately, who has authority over the South Loop Development Fund to authorize funds to be used?
Mr. Schmidt.
Acting Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, based on my analysis, we can double check with the CFO, who is online, but my realization is that it is the city, city council has authorization of those funds. But the Port Authority is the agency that has kind of oversaw those funds as well as kind of the budgeting and managing.
Okay. So then my question is, if this has been discussions that have been going on since December for at least six weeks, there's been serious discussion of entering into this, and it's this council that has the authority to encumber those funds, why was the city council not involved in those conversations?
Mr. Schmidt or Assistant City Manager? Anyone?
Acting Mayor and members, it's my understanding that there was a decision, or I was asked to give an opinion on going into closed session. I'm pulling up the statute here. I believe that it's the purchaser that is authorized to go into closed session. Yes. The public body may close the meeting to determine an asking price, to review confidential appraisal data, to develop or consider offers, counteroffers. So the entity that, it's my understanding that the, as presented or as being currently discussed at staff level, the entity that would be technically purchasing this is the Port Authority, not the city council. Mr. Schmidt can elaborate on that if he's able.
Yes. Acting Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, what Ms. Manderscheid just stated is correct. We did look at, staff's position was to go in a joint, or excuse me, concurrent closed session. That was kind of our prerogative of where we wanted to go. We were actually going to be starting to poll council members and Port Authority Commissioners on dates of when we could get that meeting. But during the legal interpretation as to who could go into closed session, it was determined that the city council was unable to go, unable to go into closed session with the Port Authority per, per the state statute.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yep. Thank you, acting mayor. So the city council is being asked to act on this, but has no authority to get, or has no legal right to get the information it needs. I heard earlier that our city attorney indicated that you shouldn't answer a question, and I'm wondering if that question could have been answered in private in a closed session? You know, and my colleague asked a question, if this isn't Expo, you know, what would happen with it? And I would, the answer was, it would depend on what the port decided with it. And yet, this council has the authority over what happens with that money. I mean, you know, we're the elected body to represent the people, and that we can't, that we can't get the information to make a decision about whether or not we should do this is, in my mind, troubling and problematic. You know, it's a very difficult situation that we're put in here.
Councilmember De La Sondra.
Related to that, a couple of follow-up questions. Would it have been okay if we participated in that closed session but didn't vote?
City Attorney.
Acting Mayor and members, the privilege only, the privilege to have that closed meeting discussion, or I shouldn't say privilege, I guess, the authority to have that closed meeting discussion under state law is, does not allow additional entities to be present. So specifically, it says the government entity. So it would not have allowed additional people to be present in the room. Specifically, we have to go through and list, state law requires us to list each person who's in the room, in addition to all the other things that you all are accustomed to going through. So only those folks that are participating in the substantive decision-making are allowed to be in the room in a closed meeting for that purpose.
Councilmember De La Sondra.
Just a quick, I have two more follow-ups if I can. And I don't know if this is directed to you, City Attorney, Ms. Manderscheid, but would it have been acceptable for the city council members of the Port Authority to call a closed session with their colleagues to inform them on this?
Acting Mayor and members, I think as things progressed and different sources of funds were being identified, it might have been possible. But at the time where the decision needed to be made, with the facts that I had available in consultation with Ms. Eddington, who's the Port Authority's counsel, and myself, we provided the opinion that we did with the facts that we had at that time. Certainly, knowing, you know, the concerns that folks have now, it may have been possible with, given the additional funds that were put in, put forward as consideration, to have taken that route. But at the time that we needed to make the decision, we made the decision with the facts that we had. So certainly, I appreciate the, what's being asked of you tonight with the data that you have available. But the decision was made at the time that we made it, based on the information that we had.
Fair enough. Maybe you can articulate, Mr. Schmidt, if the, what the consequences are if this does not pass tonight, given the concerns of council.
Sure, Mr. Schmidt.
Acting Mayor, Councilmember De La Sondra and council. Ultimately, I think we would go back to staff, to our financial team, working with the CFO and Baker Tilly, our financial advisor, looking at the other funds with which we do have on hand. Some of them are a little bit more restricted, or I should say, come with strings attached. And so that would be an option that we would have to analyze and determine if that's what's available, kind of the next route.
Assistant City Attorney.
Thank you, acting mayor and council members. I think I want to offer maybe two things and maybe three, if I can channel City Manager Verbrugge, because he always talks in three, so I'll try to come up with a third one when I get there. But you are being asked to act quickly on an item with limited information, and I think that is a, an unfortunate reality of where we are because the council is picked to choose the source of funds, right? That's the controlling authority here, is the, please use this source of funds, and then the other governing body then acts on that. And so I do think that there was a missed opportunity to bring the city council along more closely. And so that's a gap that I'll take responsibility for because that's part of my role in the organization. With regard to timing, I do think part of the analysis of other available funds might impact the cost in the negotiations. And so one of the concerns is, could it be a higher cost if there was a different pot of money, either through interest costs or some other related factor? Maybe there's a additional tails or additional things that would have to be factored into the consideration. I don't know that there's sufficient time to do that analysis of what that incremental value would be. But I do think the last thing I'll say is, and it may be regard to your first comment about not having information in advance of the Star Tribune, as part of our repeated request for more strategic, timely communication, I recognize and hear that loudly, and I appreciate that. And would just ask for just a tiny bit of grace as we, as we work through this really complex issue. And so, but that's entirely on staff.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, mayor. Maybe either the city manager or city attorney can remind me, but I recall that the city council met in closed session with regards to discussing purchase options on another property in the previous Expo, specifically the farm. How is that different? Because I believe that used South Loop Development Funds as well. And we finally, I think, ultimately approved a, I'm sorry, I'm trying to just make sure what is public and what is not, but I think we approved and publicly approved the purchase of a option on that property. And I believe it used South Loop Development Funds. So why were we legally allowed to have that discussion but not legally allowed to have this discussion?
City Attorney.
Acting Mayor and members, I don't have the details of all of that in front of me. I can certainly look that up and get back to you on the specifics of that. I just don't recall all the factors that came into play at that time.
And frankly, that's fair, because neither do I. Just, that was my recollection of, that was my recollection of it. So second question is, short of a formal closed session meeting, I know that sometimes there are informational meetings that are not dialogues, but they just provide information to council members to bring them up to speed on issues. Why was that option not pursued if staff was wanting to do a, include council in the meeting and then found out maybe they were not allowed to? Why was that option not chosen?
Mr. Schmidt?
Sure. Acting Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I think what you're referring to is more for like a formal call, one-on-one from, from staff? Is that what you were?
That would be accurate, yeah.
Acting Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I think that was a short sight on staff. I mean, that is definitely something we should look at and probably put into our process. We were moving fairly quickly on this, getting an agenda packet ready, ready for closed session, trying to analyze the financials as to, can we make this work? Is this a sound financial decision on behalf of the city? Looking at long-term financing, short-term financing, interest rates, everything. So a lot of analysis was going on, and I think that was just a misstep that staff took, and it's something we're going to learn from and hopefully correct in the near future here.
Then my last question, if that was a misstep and it's something that we could correct, is it possible, instead of acting on this, to simply table it, or whatever the right term is? And, and do that step just so that the council had the information it needed to act on this? I mean, if we, if we, we don't have, so we don't have a meeting for three weeks? Is that the problem? Okay. But, because what I'm hearing is if we don't act on it, then we have to go to different funding sources. And that's the part I'm confused by, is why we have to go to different funding sources if we don't act. I mean, what I'm hearing is if we didn't pass this, then the port's still going to buy it, but they're going to use different funding sources.
You can, go ahead, you go first.
Acting Mayor and members, there, there are other funding options, but without getting into the details of the discussion and the analysis that occurred in the, in the closed session, there are different trade-offs and considerations based on the type of funds that are accessed. And because of that, the cost of the city choosing to use those different funds changes. So that, and that element in those considerations are relevant to the decision-making process. The proposal, and I don't have the exact motion that the port approved out after the closed meeting in front of me, but the, the different types of funds and, you know, the considerations that go into putting together the offer, which form the basis for allowing the Port Authority to go into closed session, were relevant and in play. And then you had a request for staff action as, at the outcome of that closed, closed meeting. Sorry, I'm losing my voice.
Did you have one more? Councilmember Nelson? Councilmember Loman?
All right. So I appreciate that staff has admitted they missed the mark on this one. So let me, let me ask this question. How many votes are needed to pass this evening? So for example, if a number of members abstained because they did not feel comfortable voting for this, and they abstained, and then there was a vote for this, what, is there, is there a minimum threshold? Because I think it's highly, you know, reasonable to think that a number of members here may say to themselves, you know what, I don't have the information that I need in order to make the decision, I want to abstain from this vote.
Stan?
May, Acting Mayor and members, the, there is a higher threshold for a budget adjustment in looking at, which is our two-thirds vote, in looking at the resolution that's for you in the packet, that is authorizing the use of funds of this particular. in the packet, that is authorizing the use of funds, of this particular fund, for this particular purpose. And I don't see a budget transfer included in this. So I believe it's a typical majority.
So it's a simple majority, and how are the abstained votes considered to be?
The law school question.
No, I'm sorry. Well, I just think that-
I'm joking, I have it right here.
Yeah, no, I know. And I, and I just, the only reason why I ask that, I do think it's reasonable for those members who don't, you know, they weren't there, there's not that information there, they don't have the background, they may want to abstain from this. That makes sense. I just want to make sure that we can, you know, figure out a way to, to, to get this moving along here.
All right. Mayor and members, abstentions. If you, abstaining does not reduce the number of votes needed. If you abstain because you can't vote on it, because you have a direct financial interest, that would lower the vote requirements. But an abstention does not change the requirement.
So you're saying in a majority, that would be considered a yes or a no then? Or is it considered to be a neutral vote?
In this case, it requires, Mayor members, it requires, Acting Mayor members, it requires a simple majority. The motion passes if the majority of those voting on it vote in favor. So if two yes votes and one no vote, plus two abstentions, would be enough to pass an ordinary motion on a five-member council. Now we have six, so this is higher level math. So you would need a majority of those voting on it to vote in favor. You need a simple majority. So you're still going to need four yes votes, because you have six people here.
May I ask a quick clarification?
Councilmember Nelson?
So four to zero with two abstentions is the same as four yes and two no, essentially, is what I'm hearing. Is that a fair sum up?
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing. So then, may, may I make another suggestion, Mayor? That I don't know if, what the time threshold is on this, to, to get this done. Is it possible to, I'm trying to think of how to word the, the motion, but somehow, you know, vote on this tonight, you know, pending those, those, those individual meetings that they may have with, with, with staff, and then affirm that vote three, three weeks from now? Is that possible? Is that even legal, what I'm suggesting?
Acting Mayor members, you can always ratify a vote later on. Golly. Excuse me. You can always ratify a vote later on that you've previously taken. You can affirm the vote, you can take action. What I, look, what I would look to Mr. Schmidt to answer is the timing consideration of that. I don't know if the timing would work, because the council doesn't meet next week, and we don't meet on the week of the 19th, we don't meet again until the 24th of June. 26th, 20? 26th.
Mr. Schmidt, to the point regarding timing, if this was held off till the 26th?
Sure. Acting Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, during our analysis and discussion with the Port Authority, we were trying to get into a negotiation as quickly as possible with the property owner, as they do have potentially other intentions with the property. If we aren't able, if, if we can move quickly, they are, they're more interested.
So I guess my question is, if we, you know, basically, what, what I'm suggesting is that, you know, we, we don't care what, what the source is necessarily, but we approve the idea of, tonight, but then we reaffirm that the, that the, that the actual fund that we take it from i- is on the 26th. That, that's the question I'm asking, just so I'm, do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah.
You go ahead and ask that.
No, no, I appreciate it. I, if I may, Mr. Acting Mayor, I don't think that, I don't think that the port requires our authority with any of the other funds that they have. So this is the only fund that they need to ask our permission for, if I'm correct. So it would be a moot point to do that, I guess, if I can be blunt for a second. Because, because it doesn't help them, is my point.
Councilmember Mua, and then City Attorney, if you want to weigh in?
I think this, I think this points more to the relationship that the council has with our appointed and trusted individuals that we have on our various commissions, Port Authorities, HRAs. I've seen that the relationship can be a little standoffish, because it doesn't feel like we're directly involved, but we directly put these people here who have expertise, who know what they're doing, who have assessed, who are on our council. So it, it feels counterintuitive to me to second-guess everything that our, our people have put out in front of us, even though we don't have all the information that we would like. So that's where I, I would be willing to, to move this forward as it is, because we have gone through that, we have vetted, we have the people, we have council members on that, and then getting the information afterwards, because this is something that we've been looking at for a significant amount of time, and would have happened regardless of if the expo was here or not.
Uh, City Manager?
And I think, just briefly, for the purpose of, of counting noses, I think I, I agree with Councilmember Mua, especially because these are folks that, that we appointed and members of our body are on there. But I, I will recognize that the frustration of being in this catch-22 of you have to strike while the iron is hot, but kind of leaping a little bit before this full body has looked, which is not the way we would make pretty much any other decision as a body, and knowing that if we wanted to take the time to grow greater comfort with this, that it's going to have meaningful impacts on the prudence of the finances in the project. So I, I do agree, that feels like a pretty unfair spot to put this body. I agree, that's what all the moving parts are, are kind of meant to do, but the timing here, it feels not great. But, and I will say, I'd be comfortable supporting this tonight, with the explicit inspection that, considering that the Port Authority is going to have a much greater role in development across this community, even outside of South Loop, and while South Loop Development Funds won't always be the crux of these projects moving forward, I, I can't, I, I would be nervous, thinking that a great opportunity like this could come along again, and we would have no idea, because about 80% more of the city is now open to opportunities like this. And this process really has got to get nailed down. So I saw Councilmember Lohman first, and then Councilmember De La Sondro.
Well, Mayor, I'm ready to move this. I, I think I've counted the noses appropriately, you know, and I, I will, I will say, and I, I don't want to cut my, my colleague off, so certainly if you want to go to them before it rolls back to me, you know, I think you've placed it appropriately. Very disappointed in staff, want to make sure they understand that. And if this happens again, it may not turn out this way. So I want to just be sure that staff is warned that, because I mean, our, our, our voters, the, the city expects us to, you know, you know, if something goes wrong, we're going to be holding the bag. And I certainly trust our, our port member here, and that's why I asked that, that question. So I feel comfortable moving forward, I understand that. But for those folks trying to make a decision in a vacuum, that, that's highly disappointing, that staff would miss the mark on this. So I look forward to, you know, I've seen it before, staff's been able to turn it around and, and make things work well, and so I'm looking forward to that in, in the future.
Councilmember De La Sondro, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, the vote will happen, and the vote will go where it needs to go. So at, at, with all due respect, Councilmember Mua, this is the second time this has happened in less than a year that I've been on this council. So it is not me second-guessing, it's them not giving me the reason to trust them, if you ask my opinion. Okay? That's why I'm being so harsh about it. And it, it, it's fine. Look, I, I'm in product management for a living. I make decisions every day. You know what I have to do? I have to do what's called stakeholder management. Okay? And I'm asking for the Port Authority to give this council the ability to support them. That's what I'm asking for. I don't like the idea that I'm, I mean, what we're being asked to vote on is, hey, can we use this money? We can't tell you how much it is, we can't tell how much it's going to be tomorrow, we can't tell you how much it's going to be at the end, but we really want you to let us use it. That's what you're asking for. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't let my kid do that, I wouldn't let, like, my company do that. You know, if I'm on the hook for the budget, I just wouldn't. Like, and so I, I want, there's a lot of people on that commission that could have called me and given me a, a heads-up before the strip article landed. It doesn't, it's not just staff. Any of our council members, any of the commission members, could have done that. And nobody did. And so that's what bothers me. And then to come here and say, hey, trust us, when it happened before, is hard. And that's why you're seeing me ask the questions that I'm asking. Just trying to find as much information as I can to be, to be able to make an intelligent decision. It doesn't mean that I don't think that we should act quickly when we can. I love that you guys are being proactive and opportunistic. I look forward to that energy throughout the city, absolutely. It just keeps only happening in the South Loop, and it keeps only happening right around the Wall, Mall of America, and it keeps only happening when we have big things like expo going on, or a water park going on, and other things like that, so you can understand that people are kind of like skeptical. And so that's what I think we need to do a little bit better on. And so with that, happy to defer to Councilmember Lohman to make the motion. Thank you.
And I, what I wanted to just say is, I absolutely agree with everything you said there. One thing I wanted to point out, though, if, and I know staff is going to say this, if a port member or a city council member would have called each and every one of us, that would have put us in violation of, of a, okay, well, even if it, you know-
There are 10 people that could have made a phone call.
Well, we got to, we got to be careful with that. And I, I know what your intent was, you know, but we got to be really careful with that. And I don't think that's what you were saying, but I just want to just be sure that we're not having serial meetings anywhere. We're not, we're not, I don't, I don't think it was your intent, I want to just be sure that we're really clear to the public.
No, inform is not the same as influence.
Exactly.
Or persuade.
Councilmember Lohman, were you?
Yep, I'm happy to move this motion. So I'll move to adopt a, a motion authorizing the Port Authority of the City of Bloomington to use funds within the South Loop Development Fund for the purchase of certain properties located in the city.
Motion from Councilmember Lohman, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Mua. All those in favor, say, Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Just a couple comments to the motion that's on the table. First, I, I would just like to remind everyone that the Port Authority is not appointed by the city council, it is a mayoral appointment that is affirmed by the council. So we do not have a list of people that we vet and go through, it is up to the mayor to, to select those individuals. So just, just a clarification on that point, so everyone understands the process. And second, this is, I, I got to be honest, I'm of two minds on this one. One, before I get to my minds, one, I'm very upset about the process on this. And I, I hear my colleague, Councilmember De La Sondro, and her concerns, and I think I've shared some of mine. Two, we regularly approve budgets for other commissions, portions of our community, you know, we, we give approval to parks without knowing every single detail of what they're going to do, and give them authority over some of that money. But this one seems so fundamentally different in my mind than that, than here's your budget, it's all laid out, it's this, it's not just, hey, you get however many millions of dollars, and you can use it however you want. So I honestly have a ton of respect for the people that serve on the Port Authority. You know, I've been in meetings with them for six years, you know, other than the ones that are newer on there. They're good people, they're, they're trying to make the best decisions, I have confidence in them. This is, in my mind, completely a failure of process, and to keep us informed, and it, we didn't have to have that. This, this could have been another way. And I, I understand the idea that strike while the iron's hot, it's a good deal, but I, you know, I still think we can negotiate and come back and say, is this the right use of funds? And, and the thing, the thing that's hanging me up the most is what our city attorney said, is that, you know, there was discussion of different funds, and that is relevant to decision-making. And we weren't able to have that conversation, and it's relevant to our decision to take a look at that. And, you know, so I, you know, I get the counsel from our city attorney that that was relevant, and I don't have that information. And so I, I, I think what they're doing is almost entirely likely to be the best decision possible. I don't doubt that. The process leaves me with the inability to say that, okay, I'm comfortable with that. And so I'm not going to support this motion, just wanted to lay out the reasons why. And, but I, I don't mean it, again, as any disrespect to, to the Port Authority members, the process needs to be improved. The process absolutely has to be fixed. I mean, if the council is left in the dark on issues, just imagine how our community feels. And, and that's not the position we should be putting them in. So, that's, that's my speech.
All right. We have a motion on the table, was there any other comments before we vote? Okay. So with the motion from Councilmember Lohman, and the second from Councilmember Mua, all those in favor of the Resolution 3.10, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And that motion carries four to two. Moving on, it looks like we pulled from consent item 3.11, approval of the Flock Group item. Can staff remind me why this was pulled, why it needs this effort action?
Thank you, Acting Mayor and members of the council. The agreement could not be finalized with the, the Flock Group, so we don't have a signed agreement. So the action, I believe, is to continue the item until the next council meeting on June 26th.
Okay. Any questions, comments on that?
Quick, so we're, we're pulling it and we're not considering it tonight, is that correct?
We are not considering it tonight, and we are going to consider it on June 26th, when we have a, a signed agreement from the other side.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to continue consideration of this item until June 26th?
So moved.
A motion from Councilmember Lohman, second. Councilmember Nelson, all those in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that carries unanimously. Okeydoke. So we will continue on to our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. And it looks like first up, item 4.1, we have a resolution related to taxable lease revenue bonds issued by the HRA. Mr. Schmidt, are you presenting on this one as well?
Correct.
Whenever you're ready.
Thank you.
Thank you for the doubleheader, we appreciate it.
Yes. Thank you, Acting Mayor and council. Another hotel. But this one is to look, to actually have, direct the HRA to call the bonds with which are currently out on this property, and then to also approve the master satisfaction agreement, which then addresses all of the associated agreements with which this transaction happened. Just a quick background, back in 2018, the HRA worked with United Properties, the developer, to purchase the former Days Inn site. During that ordeal, in that master development agreement, it was entitled that the HRA would purchase it with a bond, and that United Properties would pay all of the interest-only lease payments, and that they had five years to develop, exclusive right to develop the property. And within that five years, if they were unable to come up with a successful development, that, that they had to, they were required to purchase the property back from the HRA. Those agreements included a sublease agreement between the HRA and the city, and, or, excuse me, a lease agreement between the HRA and the city, and then a sublease agreement between the city and United Properties, for them to manage the hotel when it was a hotel, and then for them to also demo the hotel when they did last year. So what is before you tonight is to, to act on that call. United Properties has agreed to purchase it, the five years is coming due on August of this year. All, United Properties is up to date on all of the payments, they have not defaulted on anything with regards to the agreements that are in place. And this process is just to direct the HRA, and the HRA will meet next Tuesday to authorize that transaction and to approve subsequent agreements with that. With that, I'm open for any questions.
All right. Council, any questions? Okay. Good presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There you go. All right. And this is not a public hearing, am I correct?
Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, thank you so much. So seeing no further questions or comments from the council, I will look for a motion on Resolution 4.1. Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, be happy to adopt a, move to adopt a resolution relating to the taxable lease revenue bonds, Series 2018C, issued by the Housing and redevelopment Authority, and- revenue bonds, Series 2018C, issued by the Housing and redevelopment Authority and for the City of Bloomington approving the execution and delivery of lease satisfaction and related documents.
Councilmember?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Lohman and a second from Councilmember De La Sandro regarding Resolution 4.1 is stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
May I make a quick comment?
I'm sorry, Councilmember De La Sandro, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Um, I, I, I just wanted to say that I do believe that this, at the time that this happened, that there was an opportunity for, um, I think, um, a car dealership to go on that site and that's also not happening. Not so much a question, but I'd love to know what we're planning to do with that property, if, if, if the developer has any insights into that, um, if we could get that information at some point in the future, that would be great. But, uh, yeah, just wanted to make that comment. Thanks.
Did staff have any quick input they wanted to provide, otherwise at a future date?
Sure. Acting member, councilmembers, talking with United Properties, they're currently, uh, out marketing the site. They're also talking with other developers. We have had some inquiries just with regards to various uses, some of that is multifamily, to build off of what is happening just to the North End Dino with regards to Pentagon Park. But we'll continue to have those discussions with, uh, with the developers as they come in and, um, definitely will bring this forth, uh, the city council when they are ready.
Okay, excellent. Uh, we have a motion and a second for the resolution on the floor. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that is unanimous. So moving on, uh, we have a public hearing regarding the modification of permitted operating hours of mobile food units, which might be the least appetizing way to say food truck, a mobile food unit. It looks like we've got, uh, this is being presented by Mallory, I have, from Community Development. Excellent, thank you.
Hi there, thanks for having me. Let me quick share my screen for you. Okay, great. So we are here today to talk about modifying the permitted hours of, operating hours of mobile food units, um, case number PL 202356. And so we are talking about food trucks, um, uh, this evening. So to give you some context, I'll start with the timeline of, of what really brings us here. So, um, as some of you may recall, um, in April 2022, we passed an ordinance allowing mobile food units to operate within the city and we established standards for their operation. So the, um, ordinance was adopted with the intent to review after one year. And so, um, after, uh, last, last month in April 2023, we had the report that was written by Planner O'Day, um, which, which was included in the one weekly report. Uh, within that report, um, we found that there were 16 new mobile food licenses for the City of Bloomington. There were no complaints from residents, there were no complaints from brick and mortar restaurants. Staff had found that the operators follow code standards and these are the 16 licenses that we have had throughout the course of the year. So, um, two weeks ago, we went to Planning Commission per the request of a breakfast-oriented food truck, um, and I believe that the owner is here this evening. And, um, the, uh, the, the request from the resident was that the hour limitations, um, prohibited their business, which is specifically breakfast-oriented, from operating in the city. So staff felt that this request was valid and we could see a point to it. We had an option to be able to incorporate this as part of our miscellaneous issues ordinance, which as you all recall will happen in December, but that would leave us without the opportunity to act during prime food truck season. So, um, that's what brings us here this evening for the public hearing. Just for some context, I have provided the mobile standards as they apply to food trucks and I can discuss more of these if you would like, but here they are. There's a healthy list. And then also as part of that policy framework, um, it is worth noting that we do have the noise source requirements from Chapter 10 and I have those listed on the slide as well. I have classification one areas, which are areas that where residential happens and, um, there are daytime hours and there are, um, nighttime hours that are, are listed through these standards. But what we are here discussing tonight is the hours of operation, which I have provided in this, uh, presentation. So right now, if you wish to operate within 250 feet of residential spaces, you have to, um, sell between 10:00 AM and 9:00 PM. However, um, the regular, like the overarching hours that apply to food trucks outside of 250 feet of residential spaces, the hours are from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So given, um, what we knew from the report, we felt that, um, to find, uh, an way that, uh, a food truck could operate earlier was to allow for an intersecting arterial or collector road or a non-residential building, um, to buffer, um, the sight and sound. And so, um, with that, the proposed is that the hours of operation be allowed in the circumstances of an intersecting street or building to occur between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM or the current regular hours. And this is the ordinance language that is, um, with the staff report. And I have provided a summary of three different locations within the city to give you some context about what we're talking about and how this ordinance specifically pertains. So in this, um, this slide, I have the arterial street, which is Old Shakopee, which is, uh, moving diagonally across the screen. And then you have Penn Avenue, which is, um, moving up and down on the screen. And the area shown by the green, um, demonstrates an area that would be allowed with this ordinance. As you can tell, it is across the arterial street from the residential structures that are to the south and the southeast. And the building, um, blocks the residential areas that are found to the north. I believe this is a pond store, um, a popular location that is just west of here. The second location exists at 98th and Nicollet. And here we have in the corner to the east, we have a Holiday Gas Station, followed by Burger King and Ace Hardware, and then this is a print shop. So on this diagram, you will see that there is a yellow, uh, square, which says that, um, according to the, the policy that we are discussing tonight, this would be allowed, um, to happen because the arterial street, um, is the buffer between the residential use to the south and the building is, uh, buffer to the residential use that is to the north. However, because it exists within 200 feet of a brick and mortar restaurant, not only would they have to have permission from the, uh, the location where the food truck is operating from, but they would also have to have permission from the restaurant that is next to it. If some, for some reason, the, the operator would not be able to get permission, um, they would be able to move to a permitted location outside the, the print shop, which would be over the required distance for, um, for operating near a brick and mortar restaurant. And then finally, I've provided the example of, um, the American Boulevard East and, uh, and 12th Avenue South. And so, um, in these specific cases, the ordinance would allow the, the food trucks to operate closer to the arterial road to get more, um, visibility from traffic that is, um, on the road. Because we have, um, I believe, two, the Residence Inn and the Comfort Inn, um, which, and then, um, to the, the Residential Inn, um, is where this, they would have to get permission from. And then the Collector Street blocks the residential use that is to the south. As part of, uh, this process, we did what we would typically do with a miscellaneous issue ordinance, which is to conduct a rapid racial equity impact analysis. And our findings were that, um, the dominant food system disproportionately relies on BIPOC persons to perform the most technical, physically taxing and injurious food processing tasks, often without the pathway to equity or ownership. And this ordinance represents a small change that would be allowed to support local business. Vendors may benefit from increased flexibility, um, and nearby residents may, uh, benefit from an emergent third place. But we do recognize there exists the possibility that residents may be adversely impacted, but we feel that based on what we know from the report and the study that we have done over the past year, that the likelihood for impact is low. And so, um, the Planning Commission and staff recommend the approval via the following motion, which I have on the screen.
All right, fantastic, thank you so much for the presentation, we appreciate it. Uh, council, any questions? Uh, Councilmember Lohman?
Yeah, I've got a few questions. If we could go back to that noise slide. You know, cause one of the things I think about when I, um, you know, we have those residents gathered here, uh, for that Verizon piece, uh, now we have a lot more control over, over this than we do, uh, do that, but, uh, um, I, I always kind of take that into context as I'm, as I'm looking at this stuff here. So, um, so we've got the daytime here 60, DVL. And the 65, what does that represent then with the?
Um, the, the 65 represents the high, um, on the decibel scale. So if I quick pull up, um, I made a quick slide. Here we go.
Cause the, the question I have is, you know, a normal road, you know, those artilleries and the, and those, I mean, they almost, they, they fall somewhere, you know, in that, in that area. And one of the things I just want to ensure, you know, is our, our residents, I'm just trying to understand what impact does this have, you know, to our residents and, and what would be the process by which, you know, if they've got noise complaints? Uh, and maybe I'll ask this right now too. So for example, I'm thinking about, you know, in my district, the gas for last one, that would be restricted. You wouldn't be able to put a food truck there because you've got residential on both sides, uh, on that same side of the artillery.
That is correct. It's on the same side of the artillery.
But if you, if you, if you were put at the, you know, at the flower shop or what used to be the flower shop, you could kind of project across the, across the street. And so, um, how does that work? So, um, you know, do I, I put a complaint in? How many complaints do I need to put in as a resident to kind of say, you know, you're after 10, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's seven o'clock and then this thing's going on and I believe it's over that, over that amount? What, what do I need to do as a resident to, to get around that?
Um, I believe and I can defer to Planning Manager Mark Agard, um, that the process would be to notify of our environmental health department, who would then be able to respond and take measurements to determine the, um, the, the number of decibels at the, uh, L50 and L10 levels.
Thank you. And Mr. Mark Agard, any add?
Acting Mayor Martin, councilmembers, that's correct. Uh, it would just take one complaint to get environmental health, uh, looking into the situation in more detail. And they would, they would definitely go out and, and meet with the resident and monitor the situation.
And so then, you know, I wasn't clear about what would happen if there's violations here. Could that mobile home go on, or not mobile home, pardon me, the, uh, food truck go on, you know, selling food from that, uh, until another complaint hits? How, how does this, how does that whole process work and operate? I mean, I just, I don't want to hear that, oh, we have to come back to council and change the entire policy just so we can stop that one thing from happening. Now, I don't think that's going to happen with this one that's coming forward, but you know, we are opening this up for every food truck in the city, you know, present and ones that haven't, you know, even been, uh, come up with at this point.
Sure. Acting Mayor Martin and Councilmember Lohman, uh, what I believe would happen, a complaint would be received, uh, environmental health would get in contact with the mobile food unit owner, uh, provide some education about the standards in place. If there continued to be violations of those standards, there continue to be ongoing conversations, uh, letters, uh, would be put in writing. Ultimately, there could be fines if that continued to go on. And in this case, because mobile food, food units are licensed, there's the possibility, I think of revoking the license or at least not issuing a future license. In addition, uh, beyond that, if this kept being a problem with multiple food units, the council would always have the ability to change the standards back to what they were or to some other, uh, threshold that you deemed appropriate.
Thank you for clarifying that. It, it does seem, uh, from what you're saying, certainly stop me if I'm wrong, that, that process could take, take some time, uh, to get that, uh, into compliance and, and stop that noise from happening across from that particular unit, cause we'd have to have due process, I imagine.
Yeah, Councilmember Martin, uh, Councilmember, uh, Lohman, typically a response is very, very good. The vast majority of complaints are resolved very quickly, uh, once the property owner, uh, becomes aware of the issue in the city code. In some small percentage of cases, it does take some time and, uh, there's a potential for that.
Thanks for that clarification and at this point, there are no complaints, so.
Excellent, and Councilmember De La Sandro?
Thanks, uh, Councilmember, um, sorry, Acting Mayor Martin. Hi folks, um, so just as a quick follow-up to Councilmember Lohman's question, um, I believe, am I correct in saying that, um, these tests are run as part of the licensing and inspection process anyway for food trucks? If, if I remember correctly, environmental health does do noise testing on our, as part of the food truck inspections? Do I have that right?
Acting Mayor Martin, Councilmember De La Sandro, they would not do proactive noise testing in this case. It, it would probably be complaint-driven.
Okay, so, so we don't inspect the generators and things like that that are part of the food truck itself?
Acting Mayor Martin, Councilmember De La Sandro, no.
Okay, all right, great. Something to consider if we need to consider. My question was, um, related to, um, if, if you don't mind pulling up one of the pictures, the first picture that you have that's over there by the pond house area, um, because I had a question for you about placement. That particular location, as an example, has a number of residential, um, units. Now, we allow residential units to have food trucks in their private property anyway, correct? Does this expand, does this expand that timeline as well for private use?
Acting Mayor Martin, Councilmember De La Sandro, no, it does not.
Okay. Was there a, was there a, um, a reason that that wasn't considered as part of this, other than the fact that we didn't consider it? I'm just curious if you did any studying or any, you know, looking around about whether or not to just change it, you know, like the hours generally speaking, all around?
Yeah, Acting Mayor, uh, Councilmember, um, and, uh, Planning Manager Mark Agard, correct me here if I'm wrong, but I believe that the intent for this policy was to make as few, um, changes to the policy as it existed as we could.
Okay, so, um, basically just to, just to, because it was, um, it was led by the commercial entity, we wanted to just try to address the specifics. Okay.
That is correct.
And Acting Mayor Martin, Councilmember De La Sandro, just to add a little bit to that, uh, we would have concerns with a food truck operating, you know, very early right next to a residential building. We thought the fact that there's an intervening arterial or collector street or an intervening non-residential building, that could significantly mitigate any noise impacts, uh, that you may not have if you had that food truck right in the parking lot on a residential building.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for the presentation, we appreciate it and the work. Uh, this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing now regarding item 4.2, modifying mobile food unit hours. Uh, is there anybody in the council chambers that would like to speak to item 4.2? Hi, welcome, if you wouldn't mind, uh, sharing your name and then sign in when you have a chance.
Yeah, absolutely. My name is, uh, excuse me, my name is Grant Whiteheimer and I'm the owner of a Scrambling Egg food truck and we're a breakfast-oriented food truck. It's nice to see you all again. It's nice to see you all again and thanks for giving me the chance to talk and thank you Mallory for all your work as well. It's really good. So, and I appreciate talking about this. So Scrambling Egg is a month and a half in right now and I'm happy to say things have been going really well for a business standpoint. We've been getting really good support. Yeah, it's been fun seeing the citizens come by. Everyone's really excited about a new food concept and they're also happy to see a small business owner like me get their, get a chance to build a business in Bloomington, which as a longtime resident, I'm really happy to have the opportunity to do so. And on top of that, one of my favorite things so far has been meeting small business owners in Bloomington and just having the opportunity to serve food on their property because I've talked to a few and they say just having us there alone has brought in more customers for them and increased their sales. I had someone say at a Paradise Car Wash on Lyndale, they were like, I've never seen it this busy here. I mean, this year so far, he said it was the busiest day it's been. So maybe that's because we were there as well, but it's a benefit to businesses. I think it's a benefit to the community and, you know, members like myself to just get a chance to start a business. And this modification would be great for Scrambling Egg. Gives us a chance to just go to more properties, meet new business owners and, you know, just see what we can build. But yeah, I'd love to answer any questions too, if you guys have any.
Perfect. Councilmembers, any questions? All righty. Yeah. Thank you so much and congratulations on your success.
Thank you all.
All righty. Is there anybody else in the council chambers that would like to speak to item 4.2? And Mr. Billard, is there anybody online?
Mayor, nobody on the line.
Okay. So seeing nobody coming forward, I would look for a motion to close our public hearing.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second motion from Councilmember Lohman, second from Councilmember Carter, to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that carries six to zero. Excellent. So any further discussion on this? Thoughts, feelings, Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out that this, I think it was mentioned, but just so the public knows, this is an item that came before us in the listening session because we were able to have staff there, respond to that, work with the applicant and move this thing forward. I appreciate everyone's work and I think for those that look and question the value of those listening sessions, this is just a very specific example of how well this format works where we can actually have a conversation, talk with each other as, as human beings, as fellow residents, as fellow small business owners and, and really make a difference, not just for one small business owner, but for our entire community. And so thank you to staff and thank you for bringing this forward. And I have not had the chance yet to have breakfast, but I'll be there. My wife's been there, so very much enjoyed it, so.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm, I'm excited about this. You know, when we first launched the, the food truck ordinance, we knew we were not necessarily going to get it right on the first try and so it was really important for us to have folks come help us understand how it's working for them and how it's not working for them and, and give us a chance to make that better. There's a great example of that specifically with our South Loop, the Small Business Development Center in the, in the east side there. I have a feeling we're going to see more food trucks and I'm excited about the opportunity there. So, you know, I call out to anybody who has one of those, you know, please be proactive about bringing us changes to the ordinances that we have that will help them because, you know, this is a council willing to do what we need to do to help small business owners. So, yeah, with that, let's, let's get this done. Yeah.
Perfect. And I will say, it's when I try and eat breakfast in the car, I need a car detailing place immediately afterwards. I can see Paradise, I'm sure they're doing pretty good. Excellent. Okay. So with discussion closed, if there's no additional comments, I will look for action on item 4.2.
Be happy to make that motion.
Councilmember Lohman?
Let's see here. And I would just say before the outset here, I did have a chance to have some food. It was really getting really nice. I'll move to adopt an ordinance as attached to the staff report to amend chapter 21 of the city code to modify the permitted hours of mobile food units located within 250 feet of residentially zoned and used locations.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lohman and a second from Councilmember Carter for the amendment as stated. Is there any last discussion on that? All right. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and that carries six to zero. Moving on, we have another public hearing on item 4.3 regarding a privately initiated code text amendment to allow K-12 schools as a conditional use in the I-2 limited zoning district. And I believe we'll have Mike Centenario from Planning. Whenever you're ready, Mike.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will share my, my presentation in a moment. Thank you. So again, this item 4.3 on your agenda tonight is a privately initiated city code amendment. So this isn't staff-led. This is a response to an application to, to change the city code from a private entity. And it's specific to allowing K through, K through 12 schools as a conditional use, so I mean, meaning it would require a conditional use permit within the I-2 zoning district. I'll just real briefly touch on a couple of the elements of text within the zoning district and I-2 specifically. Most of these sections have an intent element to them and really it's pretty self-explanatory what the intent is for the I-2 industrial zoning district. It's primarily for industrial type uses, including tech and distribution. So with that in mind, we compare that to a school and this is the definition of a school in the city code, primarily engaged in providing instructional services to elementary students. And so our role in reviewing this privately initiated application was to determine whether or not we felt there was an appropriate change of use, that this use should be acceptable in industrial zoning districts. And we did not feel it should be acceptable. And eventually my screen will advance. Sorry about that. So the, when we review use-based code amendments, there's a lot of consideration. It can get very complicated, but the actual change to the city code can be extremely simple. And we have a use tables in the city code for all of our zoning districts and you can see before you is a use table for our industrial zoning districts. You can see schools and if you look across the row, our various industrial districts are in the columns, there's nothing in those boxes. So that means that it's not permitted, whereas other uses are, could be a P like permitted or a C, conditional use permit would be required. And so the, the result of this code amendment, if it were to be approved, was a C would be added to the use table. So I just want to make sure it's clear, it's clear what we're discussing. Schools are not permitted in any industrial zoning districts, but this amendment would allow it to be conditionally permitted in the I-2 district. But I wanted just to include some other portions of our use tables elsewhere for other, other districts. So on the top, we have our Bs and Cs, our commercial districts. Schools are, are conditionally permitted in some of those. They are permitted by right in the CX-2 district, the Mall of America and surrounding areas. And then in our residential districts, the vast majority of schools are located in the R-1 or other residential districts and those are all conditionally permitted. And so this really is just to communicate that while they are not, schools are not permitted in industrial areas, there are plenty of opportunities elsewhere in the city to pursue a new school. This map identifies the I-2 zone parcels. So there are 67 parcels in total, really focused around where we are right now. Central, central area along 35W, west of 35W, there's a couple parcels on the northwest corner of Bloomington that are I-2, but as you can see in the map, this is really, this is really where the majority of the properties are located. And one of the, one of the primary reasons that staff and the Planning Commission were not supportive of this code amendment is derived from the, the guidance from the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan really has some very detailed policy guidance on where we, where we envision, where we may support changes to industrial areas. More specifically, if a non-industrial use wants to take over, redevelop an industrially zoned property. So there's actually a map in the comprehensive plan and simtext supporting, well, where, where should we consider these changes? And they're essentially put into two different categories, transitional area, so those are areas that might already have kind of a interesting mix of uses, or they're along arterial, arterial roads that, you know, might be conducive to a non-industrial use. And then there's areas that are called protected and that really is, the intent of that is to maintain and protect the viability of industrial uses in these areas. Now, this code amendment would apply to all I-2 zoned parcels. However, the impetus for the application is a specific parcel. So we felt it was important to at least provide that context and give you, this is a real-world example of the type of properties you may, you may see in the future should the code amendment forward. And I have it outlined in the L here and it is within the protected, protected industrial area. So from a comprehensive plan perspective, we would not believe it's consistent with the guidance in the plan. And here's just another aerial image, so large-scale industrial facility, there's a variety of industrial uses of many tenants. A school would just be one of many tenants. And so that gets at, we had a lot, took issue with compatibility between various uses, industrial uses, which could have a variety of hazardous materials separated from a school by a wall. And so there's, there's that compatibility issue. Another, another element that staff discussed and the Planning Commission really honed in on was the nature of students and, you know, if students would be, feel comfortable walking to school. And this area, which has, it does have sidewalk, but it's fairly limited and there is a lot of potential industrial truck traffic, this really would not be a great place for a student to walk to school. So there's, there really is a land use compatibility issue that we have with this potential code This is street view. Again, we're on, this particular site is just one example of a potential site, you know, sidewalks, but it doesn't have like the, the visibility, the, I guess pedestrian scale of a residential area. Another element that led us to not support the amendment was performance standards that we have in the code. So we have the uses that are permitted or might not be permitted, but then a lot of times those uses are followed up with performance standards that give you additional regulation to consider. And this is taken directly from the code. This is what we have for schools and colleges. And these are all great elements to incorporate in the city code, but really it does not address those potential issues between schools and industrial uses. And so we feel that if this code amendment were to be approved, we'd really want to take a look at what other performance standards are necessary. And so in our, in the staff report, we said, well, the city council has the ability to decide if this is an appropriate use, but still, we, our recommendation would be to deny this application and then direct staff to study, to study this and what sort of performance standards could we come up with that address that compatibility issue? So in summary, there's really four primary reasons why we are not supportive of this amendment. One is the erosion of industrial, industrially zoned properties. We have a comprehensive plan issue with that. The city council recently debated this in 2018 and in 2019 where this, this exact question was on the table and ultimately the council decided not to allow it in industrial areas. Discussed the incompatibility between schools and industrial uses and then the performance standards that accompany them. So with that, the Planning Commission and staff are recommending denial of the proposed amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Council, any questions? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I do have some questions that I wanted to ask here. If we could go back to your slide where it had 2001 West 95th Street and there's one right before that one that I wanted to look at, they kind of had...
It's here?
Yeah, that one there. So just a question here. So, you know, we look here at Penn Avenue, kind of, oop, you were right in the right spot there.
This one?
This one works just fine. This is fine. I'll take you back to that other one. I've got questions about that too. So if we look at Penn Avenue here, we've got the blue kind of encasing all the way around here and, you know, as we look at 35W, we've got that blue piece that's kind of in the, in the middle there. How did that get to be the way that that is, to be a transitional zone right there? See that piece there? I don't, I'm sure what that street is. It's 96, 95 and a half there.
If you can see my cursor, is that this?
No, I'm talking about over here where we've got, because other, other blue pieces are buffering the entire zone, but this one delves in to... I don't know what that street is. I think it's, yeah, that one there. Yeah, if you're looking there, that blue, yeah, that blue piece right there, that's delving in there. And I'm going to come back to that because that's the piece where I've got a question about. But, you know, I, I saw all the, you know, all the pieces about the school, that, that makes total sense, but we have the accessory use of, of a daycare. And so that, that's where I am very confused. So we're saying that, that a college and a university by condition could be in this site and then also, I skip over a whole age segment and then I go all the way down to childcare as an accessory use, but yet I have hazardous materials that are, that are in the area. Help me from a logic standpoint, make that make sense, why, why that makes sense to be able to do that in this zone. You know, certainly, you know, I'm, I'm not a real big proponent of charter schools, so I'm always looking for an excuse, you know, not to support them. And I'm not saying that I would not necessarily support this one or not, but I, I'm just, that, that doesn't quite make sense to me. So if you could help me kind of tie those things together.
Acting Mayor, Councilmember Lohman? Yeah, on its face, it, it would cause confusion, certainly. And I think it, a lot of the clarification I provided relates to what the intent of the daycare allowance entails. And so when it's conditional accessory, that means it has to be accessory to something else, to something that's a permitted use. And so what the intent of the, that daycare allowance would be is if you have a, let's say a large employer within the city of Bloomington, let's just use Donaldson as an example. They have a large facility, it's really a campus, as well as they have industrial uses, but then they also have a substantial amount of office and it may behoove them to provide daycare services at their campus for their employees. That was really the intent, is to have daycare as part of a larger facility where you might want a daycare on-site for your employees. Still would have required a conditional use permit, so there would be an additional level of discretion, but that really is, is what it came down to. I'm not aware of any daycares in the, in the city of Bloomington that, that fit that precise description, but that was the intent.
All right. Well, that hazardous waste piece, you know, really kind of, kind of, you know, that's the piece I'm kind of key in on. And so just, you know, one other piece about that, I just had a question about that. What is considered to be hazardous waste, or hazardous waste, I'm sorry, hazardous materials that we're, we're talking about, you know, in these areas? Because, you know, you know, my, my antennas have gone up even more now, now that I have the accessory use there that we don't want to have a school next to. I still, as a council member, can't understand why I'd want to have a university or a daycare, even if it's an accessory use next to this, if it's so hazardous, you know? So help me understand, what is hazardous? What does that mean? And I've got one last question for you on, on Lyndale, because I think my understanding here, I'll just go ahead and answer that piece there, hazardous.
Acting Mayor, Councilmember Lohman? Unfortunately, I can't give you a very precise definition of what is considered hazardous or what isn't, but one, one thing that is very important are building occupancies. So the type of occupancy of a building, it's related to building code, fire code, and there are certain occupancies that are assigned to uses that have hazardous material. And so if a, if something spills, if there's a spill or a release of some sort of material, if you have to evacuate the building, that's definitely hazardous. But there is, I, I'm not aware of a very precise, easy to summarize definition of what's hazardous. and what's not.
Thank you, I get that. Still makes me nervous with an accessory use for a daycare and for university students, if I'm putting them in that harm's way. So then my last question is, my understanding is with this transitional zones here, you can have residential in those transitional areas. Is that, is that correct? I know we did that in Lyndale, we put that there, and so, stop me if I'm wrong.
No, you're correct.
Okay. So now if I have a residential area where I place that, and I could put this on the Penn Avenue area, now I have a young person living, you know, right there in that residential area, and, you know, they're living there, and the hazardous materials are in the red area. So that doesn't comport to me either, I don't, and I understand this zone here is not, but if I were to just make that area blue, like the other piece I just showed you, it would be right next door, again, to the hazardous zone. So that's what doesn't make sense to me, you know, and this is something I brought up during, when we talked about the Lyndale area, and this is why I'm confused. Now, we're saying, you know, with this particular charter, I know it's not in there, this particular piece, well, that's hazardous. So why would we want to put a residential zone where people live, sleep, eat, and play, but yet you can't have a school there? That's what doesn't make any sense to me, and then we also have the childcare piece. So that's the question that I have, and I'm trying to get that square in my head, why that makes sense.
Sure. Acting Mayor Martin, Councilmember Lohman. We may not want to have a residential development adjacent to an industrial use. What the code does in the, I believe it's the TI district, it allows the opportunity to pursue that sort of redevelopment. But there are absolutely situations where we may not want to see that in a particular location, whereas there might be locations that might be more suitable to residential development. So it's hard, it's hard to make those generalizations on the entire area that's identified as transitional would be appropriate for residential, because I don't think we would come to that conclusion. But the code does have allowances to pursue a conditional use permit that allows residential uses.
Excellent. Any other questions? Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you. Hey, how are you tonight?
Thank you.
I had a question about some of the uses that are already in that area, and why, why we might consider those different than a school scenario. Most specifically, the Richfield Gymnastics Club is literally adjacent to, I think, this property, and I assume, given its, given its task, it's supporting children as well as adults, I can't do gymnastics anymore, so maybe no adults, and it's all kids, I don't know. You don't want to see me do, you don't want to see me do gymnastics. But why would, why would, can you give some context as to why that was approved, when it was approved, happened before my time, obviously, but I'm curious what, how you distinguish the difference?
Sure. Acting Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro. You know, I think a lot of the, a lot of these different uses are, they have similarities, right? Gymnastics facility is likely serving children. But one of the distinctions I would make is the level of supervision associated with an athletic training facility like a gymnastics or a dance, or some other use that has already been approved through a conditional use permit. And, you know, the distinction with schools, however, is we feel that the level of supervision and monitoring, like a per student, is just not the same. There's also the amount of time that a child, for example, would spend at Richfield Gymnastics versus at a school. You know, usually, we're talking a half an hour, an hour with direct supervision. Also, their parents are, some parents are likely there as well. So those are, those are just some of the distinctions that we would make, that distinguish a non-school use, like an athletic facility versus a school.
Thanks, that's helpful. Quick follow-up to that. If this was a request for a high school, like a 9 to 12, as opposed to a K to 12 type situation, would that change your opinion?
Acting Mayor, Councilmember, no, it wouldn't. We would, we would not be supportive of a, of a high school. But it's also, that would require a different definition to be established in the city code, which isn't what this application sought.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Santinario, appreciate it. So this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing now regarding item 4.3. Is there anyone in the council chambers that is looking to speak to this? Excellent, thank you so much. If you wouldn't mind stating your name, and then when you have a second, go ahead and sign in on the clipboard there.
Yes, good evening. My name is Bradley Hoyt, and I'm the owner of the building that was shown earlier on the slide here. And it was I that initiated this through my counsel. And frankly, I wasn't planning on attending tonight. I've been doing this for a long time, and I lost my enthusiasm and my optimism a long time ago. In fact, about 10 years ago, we submitted for a building located at 6150 West 110th Street. This was a two-story office warehouse building I had constructed originally for a company called Technology Marketing Group. And it consisted of 45,000 feet, and it was all office. About half of it, though, was a two-story high, basically like a bond trading pit, right in the middle of the industrial park. But the building was autonomous, had its own access, and that's right behind where the post office is, on Old Shakopee Road. And the city denied that. We had some disagreements about that, but the city denied that. The end result of that was, the building went into foreclosure, the lender took it back, sat empty for seven years, didn't produce anything of value to the city or to citizens, its property tax value was cut down by 70%, and I lost $2 million. So that was the end result. And here was a building that was completely isolated, had no industrial traffic whatsoever, didn't have any of these supposed issues that are being raised, but what we're really here for is to discuss a mechanism, not a project. We're not applying for this permit because we don't have the legal ability to do so. What we're asking for is a pathway in order to allow us to apply for a conditional use permit that you would then have the ability to review strenuously and impose standards, although they would, I would expect, be reasonable standards. And this has been subverted. I looked at the planning commission meetings, I didn't attend it, but all of the discussion has to do with this building, this parking lot, blah, 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 blah. That's not what's at issue. What issue is here is to make it possible to apply for a conditional use permit for a school. By way of background, I know it probably doesn't matter, but I graduated in the first class from Jefferson High School in 1971. In 1973, I built my first industrial building in the city at 150 West 88th Street. So this is my 50th year. During that time, I built 62 buildings in Bloomington, totaling 4.5 million square feet, that's bigger than the Mall of America. And I'd like to say that was because we had a great relationship and collaboration with staff, but that's really not true. The truth is, the relationship between developers and the city is adversarial at best. And I would point out that with 50 years' experience in history in this city, in developing in every industrial park in this city, that I have a base of knowledge and experience. We have a, an organization called the NAIOPE, which is the Association of Industrial Office Parks and Owners, and we meet once a month. In the course of doing that, I meet with a lot of my peers, and a lot of brokers who handle all of the transactions in these communities. And I would submit that we are the people who know most what the market is, what's going on in the market, and what the dynamics are. So when I read commentary about protected industrial sites, and about plans that were done, studies that were done, obsolescence studies, it begs the question, why were none of us, the people who possess the knowledge regarding these things, ever invited into the discussion? We have not ever been invited to discussion, we've attempted to enter the discussion, hasn't happened. So I wouldn't rely a whole lot on what the planning staff says about what the market is, I know what the market is, they do not. So when we get down to this building, this is the old John Deere distribution plant. It was never a manufacturing plant, and as far as manufacturing goes, I can tell you, a lot of you weren't born yet, but industrial manufacturing in this country started to leap about 40 years ago. And now the COVID supply chain issues have brought to light that maybe that wasn't such a good idea. But this country has transitioned from 85% manufacturing and 15% service to exactly the opposite today. And so the need for buildings of that nature just doesn't exist. I took the liberty of driving around the parking lot and just dictating into my notes all of the tenants, these industrial tenants that we have here. Insurance office, art and framing, art studio, film studio, amusement arcade, CrossFit, insurance agency, volleyball academy, medical products, training center, hotel, Jivaya Learning Center, kitchen showroom, theater systems, AA, landscape maintenance, computer gaming repairs, engineering offices, transmission shop, auto body shop, dog hotel, brewery, environmental offices, home improvement store, churches, yoga studios, government offices, and dance studios. I would submit that none of those are industrial uses. And I was mentioning to a gentleman earlier today that I'm constructing an industrial project today in Elgin, Illinois, which is a western suburb now of Chicago. And that building is 2 million square feet, and is 48 feet high. All facilities that are now being constructed to deal with distribution are intermodal. We need to have rail, we need to have shipping, and we have to have highways, and we have to have very large buildings, and land is scarce, so they're very tall. That site takes 200 acres of land. So if we took your entire industrial park here, we could build one of them. Except we'd have to pay about $300 million for the dirt first, which ain't going to happen. So there is no industrial park in this city that is even remotely significant as an industrial park. Institutional industrial parks are large, they have mass. And when we get into these things, what we'd like to see, this is what I see, a recurring theme with planning departments and new regulations. The favorite one for us developers these days, it has been for the last decade, is mixed use. Everybody goes to land planning conferences, wouldn't this be neat, wouldn't this be cute? Here we'll have retail on the bottom, and then we'll have offices, and then apartments, and it'll be this utopian exercise where everybody will live and work and play all here in this building. Well, here's what happens, come out to Wayzata where I live, 13 years ago, they built this project called the Promenade, and 13 years later, 80% of the retail space has never been occupied once. And the one major tenant they do have doesn't have to pay any rent, because the lease says, without other retailers, I don't have to pay rent. So a lot of these, these arguments are based on what we'd like to see, without any cognizance of what the reality of the marketplace is. The economic impact to me, which doesn't matter to the city, but it does to me, is that that's, that empty space costs me $100,000 a year to heat, to cool, and to pay my property taxes on, as opposed to getting $200,000 a year in rent if it were occupied. Is that space going to get rented? Well, let's, let's think about that. Before COVID, I've got 20,000 square feet of office on Hampshire and Old Shakopee Road. That building used to be called the Alice Chalmers Parc Distribution Building. That office space has been...
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Hoyt, but maybe about two more minutes?
You got it.
Okay, thank you.
That space has been empty for 17 years, 17 years. So there's, there's no jobs in there, there's nobody working there, they're not making any money to spend at any retailers, it's just empty. This space will remain empty forever. Now that we have COVID, office space is not needed, they're not coming back to it, this is a cultural shift, people will not go to work. I have four kids in college right now, and believe me, we don't, we don't think alike. They're not going to, to an office, ever. So if you have new buildings like in West End, they have a shot at getting some Class A tenants, but if you're a Class B or C, or this is, you know, D minus, it's never going to get occupied. So that's, that's all I have to say, is we just ask a chance to make an actual presentation for a conditional use. But before we can do that, we need to have that, that ability to do so. And we'll be able to address any legitimate comments during that process, if you'll give us a chance to do it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right. Is there anybody else in the council chambers that wishes to speak to item 4.3? All right, seeing nobody else coming forward, Mr. Billard, is there anybody on the phone?
Mayor, nobody on the phone.
Okay. With nobody coming forward in the council chambers and nobody on the phone, I look for a motion to close the public, public hearing on item 4.3.
So moved.
Give a motion. Motion from Councilmember Lohman, and a second from Councilmember Muwa. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that carries 6 to 0. So, council, I will look to y'all, any thoughts, any additional questions on this? Yeah, Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you. I don't know if this is a question, Acting Mayor, for Glenn and team, or if this is a question for the applicant. But I'm curious about the consideration of a conditional use permit here as opposed to the potential of rezoning that particular property to the transitional, which would effectively not make it necessary for that. I'm wondering if that was a consideration, or if that was offered to the applicant as an alternative. And I ask that specifically because it looks very close to other transitional areas, and it seems like it might have been an option.
Mr. Mark.
Acting Mayor Martin, Councilmember DeLisandro. In terms of rezoning the site, a couple impediments. It is an I-2 area. This particular parcel is kind of in the middle of that I-2 area, it's not in the fringe. Whenever rezoning comes up, we always look to the comprehensive plan for guidance. The comprehensive plan, as Mr. Santinario described, guides the area as protected industrial. There are parcels along Penn Avenue that are guided as transitional. Doesn't mean the city would necessarily support rezoning, but would be a little bit more open to the conversation, and would look at it as a case-by-case basis. But this particular parcel, from staff's perspective, is not well-suited for rezoning.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Nelson.
Actually, I don't have a question, I just had comments, so. So I'm actually sympathetic to the, the idea of the, you know, the marketplace versus, you know, trying to plan things out overly extensively. But what I see as a subtle difference here is that this changes industrial zoning. Maybe we have the zoning wrong, but this changes industrial zoning and allowing a use with kids of that age to take school buses, to walk to school, and things like that in an industrial zone. Maybe that's not the way it's being used, maybe that's not where industrial is going, that doesn't make sense. I mean, I think the question that needs to be asked is different than the one that's being asked tonight, if that is the truth. If this is not being used for industrial uses in that area, and I would look, I would look to staff for an answer to that, not tonight, but, you know, in the future, then maybe we need to relook at that. You know, if the marketplace is not going to value and fill up Class D industrial space or office space, then maybe we need to rethink those areas. But in my mind, we need to rethink those areas, we don't need to open up the idea of putting kids in industrial zones. And that, that doesn't make sense to me. I mean, because this is not kids being brought to their, you know, things for an hour by their parents, they're dropped off, they're walked in, they're picked up, all of that. This is kids on buses, kids on, you know, walking to school, you know, you know, those types of uses in my mind, and we had this discussion in 2019, I think it was, and my mind hasn't changed on that. So I sympathize with you, I mean... I mean, I own far less property than you, but I have half of my property vacant because of what's going on in the marketplace, and trust me, it's not that much property. But it is an issue, and it's an issue the city needs to face because we have office property, we have industrial property. You know, as we heard, industrial property, the needs of it are completely different. I mean, the ceiling heights, the ability for automation, the scope and the scale of it is totally different, and we should be rethinking how to repurpose this. I just don't think this is the right mechanism. So that's just my thought.
Got you. And Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. I would agree with Councilmember Nelson. You know, I imagine myself, I mean, I am a parent myself, my kids go to school every day, and I assume that where they're going to school is a place that is safe, right? And obviously, there are all kinds of issues, but when I think about the industrial zone, the issues laid out in the staff report related to noise, environmental hazards, fire safety concerns from the fire department, traffic conflict concerns from Public Works, I just don't think that it makes sense. And I do think it, what you said about just fundamentally looking at the industrial zones makes more sense versus making one change related to allowing K-12 schools in them. So I'll keep my comments short. I don't think that we can assume that if we were to approve this and a K-12 school was placed in this area, that families would know and understand that there were these risks and these hazards when they send their kids there. And for me, that's just not okay. So I will not be supporting the proposal. Thank you.
Councilmember Loman.
You know, thank you. I'll go a step further. You know, I, when I look at industrial zones, you know, I think staff has made a great point about these K-12s. And so for the life of me, I can't understand why we have daycares located in these zones as well. Or universities and colleges. That just doesn't make any sense to me at all, unless I see that we were to also move to remove those as well, or direct staff as part of this, I don't think I can support this because I feel so strongly about that. I won't put the residential piece in there, but I do also feel about that as well with the transitional zones. If we're serious about hazardous zones and keeping our young people safe when we talk about these hazardous materials, even as an accessory use, you know, if we've got these hazardous things going on, why would we want to put our population at risk? So I totally agree with staff if that's what we're trying to do. And so I'll leave it at that front, that piece there. And the second thing I want to mention is that I do think that we do need to have a look at these industrial zones. I think what the gentleman has brought forward, and I had the conversation with him earlier today, is this idea of looking at our industrial areas and trying to be innovative with it. Now, this innovation, this council member cannot support as it is presently put forward. But I do think there is a need for innovation and looking at ways of looking at our zones. We did that with our transitional zone, I applaud staff for doing that with the exception of residential property. Because I do believe that having hazardous materials next to young people where they sleep, eat, and play is just the wrong, that's just not something that we ought to do. So if I don't see those things in here, that'd be the reasons why I do not support moving this, denying this particular piece, because I would like to see a stronger stance from this council around hazardous materials, universities, colleges, daycares within the zone.
And so first, I've got Councilmember Muah, and then Councilmember Delisandro.
I just want to be clear about what exactly we're looking to do. So this motion would be to direct staff to prepare a resolution of denial, right? I fully believe that we, as a city, need to reevaluate and relook at how we are gonna develop. And without providing opportunities for owners, industrial owners, for new schools to come forward and present a new vision of what this could be like, we won't ever be able to fully understand what that looks like. It's market-driven, the school wants to be here in Bloomington. So if we deny, if we vote yes to direct staff to deny this, how would we ever know what the proposal ever is? Because we don't have their proposal here in front of us, it's not what we're voting on. And so as a proponent of free market reforms who help us inform what we do, it's worth hearing what they want to do, how they plan to mitigate the issues that we've all pointed out, and I fully agree with, how they plan to remove those issues, how they plan to incorporate themselves into that particular piece of property, that particular neighborhood. And so I would be supportive of hearing what the school, what the owner wants to bring forward, so that we can start that conversation of how do we transform these industrial areas? How do we transform Bloomington to move us into the future?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Yes, so I guess I kind of am two minds. I appreciate exactly where Councilmember Muah is coming from. I mean, if we want to let the market dictate what these areas might look like, you know, you kind of have to have the market tell us what they want to do and have us evaluate that, and I think that that's important. To me, the issue at hand is in the abstract, though, which is, should schools be in industrial zones? Regardless of which industrial zones, the question is, should schools be in industrial zones? And I think the answer is probably no. I can't, especially K-12 schools. I'm much more ambivalent on high schools or even in colleges, and I would never want us to deny somebody who's willing to bring a large company into the city from offering daycare to their workers. Like, I don't want to ever be in that situation, but because I think you can mitigate that to some degree. But I think the ultimate problem that we have here is truly that over the course of, because we have so many other permitted uses in this industrial area, we actually have a market evaluation. We do. And it's telling us, per the gentleman who spoke on this, that most of the things that are happening in this area are not actually industrial use. So that's why I'm more of a proponent of looking at these areas, specifically this area, or any of our protected industrial areas, to see what exactly is actually happening there, and saying, okay, maybe there needs to be a different classification for those areas. What I'm concerned about with doing this tonight is that areas where we do absolutely have industrial use are gonna also be potentially allowed to put schools in them. And that I definitely don't want to have happen, right? So to me, I think the action item, while I would support the denial in this particular case, is to say, maybe we need to take another look at protected industrial areas in the city and reclassify sections of that zone to either transitional or commercial or one of the other areas, so that it actually reflects what's going on in those areas. In which case, then we open it up for the potential for K-12 and other things. Because if 30 years has gone by, and despite the fact that we have all these requirements on industrial uses, and we end up with, you know, breweries and gymnastics and, you know, vertical endeavors and things like this, we're obviously not supporting industrial there. That doesn't count as industrial. And so we really should take, I think, a comprehensive look at these I-2 areas and say, you know what, there's whole sections of the city that are candidates for revision on that front. That would be my preferred approach than the specific action tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, council members. And I guess just, I won't repeat everything that's been said here. I think we took a really strong step in the right direction by creating these transitional zones, which I think is a big step forward to recognizing that we have too much capacity for hardcore industrial use in the community that's not gonna come back. So I think it's worth nodding to the fact that we've already kind of quasi-change focus for huge swaths of our industrial base. Now, should we have been more aggressive on that? I think that would be an interesting project for staff to come back and tell us about. And at the same time, include in there, I mean, they pass hundreds of billions of dollars for semi-chip manufacturers, and they say you're required to have a childcare facility on the first floor by the parking lot. So to know as well before we're making kind of sweeping changes to those allowed uses, what are the impacts gonna be when we have proposals in front of us to take advantage of these fast-moving changes in spaces like this? So I as well support denying this particular, agreeing with staff's recommendation, school doesn't make sense for the industrial zones we have now. But to move forward and put on staff's radar, and maybe even a formal project request, to say, okay, let's look at the industrial redevelopment strategy, the comp plan, the Lindale Avenue retrofit, and say, should we put the pedal further to the metal? On saying, we are gonna be the experimental community with how these spaces get redesigned and reinvigorated moving forward, with a comprehensive view of how all those pieces fit together. So I'm in favor of staff's recommendation of denial on this one, but I do like being purposeful about saying, why childcare, and how can we turn that into an asset for what we're offering the business community? Why colleges and universities, and how can we turn that into a big push for the trades? Trade schools seem like they'd be perfect for some more of these type of facilities. But to have it be purposeful and not put it all on this one decision on a very specific circumstance, but is just my two cents. Is there any other questions, comments? Councilmember Delisandro.
I apologize for not mentioning this before, I was one-trick pony there for a second. I did, you know, I do understand that the owner, you know, having properties sit vacant is not a positive thing. It's not better for the city either, right? We collect some marginal, you know, tax revenue on that, but, you know, it'd be better if we were seeing vibrant community built within that space. So I really do understand and respect that. Is there, maybe this is a community development kind of more macro-level thing, but, you know, having us have options for either, you know, that individual and their interest in a K-12 school, you know, to find them someplace where that would work, or, you know, alternatively, to help them market what they do have under all the permitted uses that exist under conditional use. You know, I just, you know, those are the kinds of things I think we can do, and I do respect the fact that, you know, we did have someone here tell us that it's kind of hard to be a developer in Bloomington. It's not the first time I've heard that. So, you know, I think we have opportunity there, and I know that's one of the main reasons we expanded our port authority, is to enable those kinds of activities. So I would encourage outreach from staff to this individual on that count to see if we can be more innovative and proactive. Thanks.
Absolutely. Okay. Counsel, if there's not any further questions or comments on this, I would look for action on item 4.3 regarding the privately initiated city code text amendment. Anyone interested in making a motion on this? Oh, it's all good.
I'd be happy to make the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Delisandro.
Yes. I guess I'm not happy to make the motion, let's put it that way. I want to be respectful of the fact that it's not always a great thing to deny somebody something. Okay, so the planning, let's see. Motion to continue consideration of case PL 2023-47 to the June 26, 2023 City Council meeting, and to direct staff to prepare a resolution of denial for the proposed city code text amendment.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carter seconds. We have a motion from Councilmember Delisandro, second from Councilmember Carter regarding item 4.3. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye, no.
Okay, the motion passes 4 to 2. Next up, we have another public hearing, item 4.4 regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 17, Appendix A of the city code relating to right-of-way fees. We have, I believe Carl Keel is the presenter on this one? Public Works Director, or somebody else?
I'm sorry, you caught me dozing.
Oh, it's all good, Director, whenever you're ready. As long as we're not dozing, yeah.
Mayor and counsel, again, apologize for being slow in the uptake there. But this item has to do with the recalculation of fees associated with permits for primarily utility companies to do business within our right-of-way. And we are gathering some more information about what the possible impacts of those changes would be. And so we're asking you tonight, because it was noticed for tonight, to open the public hearing, but to continue the public hearing in consideration to the July 10th meeting.
Any questions from council on this item? Okay. So seeing none, this is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing now regarding item 4.4 regarding right-of-way fees. Is there anybody in the chamber that would like to speak to this noticed item? Okay. Seeing none, I don't know why I was surprised by that. Seeing none, is there anybody on the phone? Mr. Billard.
Mayor, nobody on the phone for this item.
Okay. Seeing nobody in the chamber to speak to this, and nobody on the phone, let's see if I get the motion correct for this. So motion to continue item 4.4 until the July 10th, 2023 Council meeting?
Motion.
Right in front of me. Okay, do I hear a motion to open and hold the public hearing until the July 10th, 2023 City Council meeting regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 17, an Appendix A administrative relief and fee schedule of the city code relating to right-of-way definition and fees?
Second.
Okay, I guess we have a motion in a second.
Okay. I was gonna ask if you needed us to say so, move.
I'm breaking so many precedents.
Well, the mayor can move it.
I offered, I made it.
I'll take it. All right, so we have a motion surprisingly by me, and a second from Councilmember Loman. All those in favor of continuing this signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes 5 to 0. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, we will get into organizational business. So our first item of organizational business regards potential modifications to the 2023 Planning Commission work plan, and to present this is Mr. Nick Johnson. Nick, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Martin, and members, good to see you all. I have six slides, and that includes the motion, so I'll be brief here. So thank you. As you all know, the Planning Commission, the advisory body in matters pertaining to land use, adopts a work plan every year, and it basically sets the agenda for the Planning Commission for all, particularly the long-range planning projects, the more legislative kind of roles and duties, area plans, comprehensive planning, those types of projects that they tackle, and by extension, the Planning Division staff, most notably the long-range planning staff, focus on during the course of our year. And so the 2023 work plan was adopted in January by the City Council after being reviewed by the Planning Commission. And as you all know, at our last City Council meeting on May 22nd, there was some discussion of the single and two-family residential zoning ordinance. And as part of that discussion, some themes emerged from some of the public testimony, as well as the council discussion and presentations from staff. And ultimately, where there was consensus from the council was to study adding three projects to the Planning Commission work plan. And those three projects were the RS1 zoning district amendments, the RS1 zoning district rezonings, and environmental standards applicable to low-density residential areas. So I'll describe those briefly on the next slide. But just for, to be clear on what the ask is tonight, it's just to clarify that yes, we do want to proceed with these projects and add them to a Planning Commission work plan, and then subsequently, what is the desired timeline and priority of those three projects? More specifically, tackling them this year, adding them to the work plan of 2023, or adding them to next year's work plan. So getting to the projects themselves, within the cover sheet or the staff memo associated with this item, we did provide time estimates as well, from like a staff capacity hours standpoint, as well as a duration standpoint. What I'll note about that is what I noted in January, that's definitely more of an art than a science. All these projects, most notably recently, single and two-family zoning, don't necessarily follow precisely to the month or to the hourly estimate of what we anticipate, just from a staff capacity standpoint. But that being said, it's the best method we have of trying to ensure that we have adequate capacity to tackle all the year's work. So just want to make that point there. In terms of the projects themselves, so two of them might be more, they can be tackled all independently of one another theoretically, but staff does view two of them being more intrinsically linked than the third project. And of course, that would be the RS1 zoning district amendments and the RS1 rezonings. I do want to make a point on the RS1 rezonings is that we view that more as proactive rezoning on the part of the city, as opposed to a property owner-initiated application, which the city would lawfully have to respond to that within a certain time period. So those are two separate types of applications. So there's the RS1 district amendments, the RS1 rezonings, and then the third and final one would be environmental standards review and potential code amendments. I should know that with all three of these, the intention tonight is not to really dive into the details of what- into the details of what is involved in those projects. We would do that likely in a subsequent study session format where we could take more time, get really into the nitty-gritty details of what the city should be actively pursuing with those things. A point about the timing, so in terms of the decision point tonight, whether to add them to 2023's work plan or 2024, should you want to pursue these? If the RS1 rezonings are linked or kind of based on some of the amendments that the city puts forth to that district, and you know, what could those be? It could be changes to the intent statements, kind of defining what the district is intended to do, kind of broadening that or sharpening that. It could be minimum performance standards such as lot size, lot width, those other kind of elements that we traditionally see within our different zoning districts. And so if the desire to pursue proactive rezoning on the part of the city initiating that action is directly tied to that whatever amendments you want to make to that underlying district, it's likely that there would be some kind of sequencing that would occur between that. You'd likely want to adopt whatever amendments you want to make to that district before pursuing the proactive rezoning action. So that does present a little bit of a timeline component that, you know, by virtue of that, if you concur with that sequencing concept, the rezoning actions likely would get pushed out until after those amendments. So thinking about the timelines of those things. So that might bias more staff capacity. It might, you know, have that aspect to it, but just something to consider there. The environmental standards review analysis, that's really independent of those other two projects. There's no sequencing component necessary to that since a lot of those standards are applicable across all of our residential zoning districts. So with that, should the new projects, should there be a desire on the part of the council to pursue these projects in 2023? What staff would suggest is that there be some type of equivalent balancing to consider either postponing or pausing projects that are currently adopted on the 2023 work plan. And so we're very intentional about these two terms, either shifted or paused. Shifted, what that really is referring to is projects that have not yet been initiated. So there's some projects that were planned for the second half of the year. You know, staff has done very early preliminary investigations into these topics but have not formally started the process of a long-range planning project on these four items. With respect to the term pause, pause means is that we could, there are projects that are currently in progress, and in some of those projects, there are some ways to reach natural breakpoints where you can hit the pause button, make sure that you're capturing the value from all the work you've done thus far, but continue to pursue those projects at a later date or shift the project schedule. So those are kind of the main options. Staff would certainly recommend, if there is equivalent balancing in terms of if 2023 is the year that you want to tackle these new projects, we would first suggest looking to projects that have not yet been initiated as opposed to projects that are already in progress. But that being said, you know, I don't want to constrain what the options are on the table for the council. So there certainly is some kind of math exercises that go along with this. I brought a calculator, it's back there if we need it. But the theory of this slide here is just that when thinking about what projects you want to prioritize and when, thinking about what other projects should potentially be shifted, projects in this case that have not yet been initiated, but what potential projects should be shifted to 2024, should the council want to make that decision. So that's kind of the, that's the extent of it. I do have some proposed motion language if you want to, if there's any, you know, I can make arguments for merits for all of these projects, one way or the other, to actually why they're needed now or why they could be delayed. But if there's any desire on any council member from a question standpoint to kind of learn more about those projects, I can kind of bring folks back up to speed from our discussion in January. So happy to take any questions and be helpful in facilitating where I can.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and thank you and staff. This is one of the quicker turnarounds I've ever seen from a council conversation about reprioritizing to saying, okay, nuts and bolts, where do we want to go? So appreciate that. Council, questions? Councilmember Del Sandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is great. Thank you very much for pulling it together. I know that, I noticed that some of the, kind of the, well, maybe you'll get to this. I should ask the question. Your proposal is including the not-initiated projects. Are there candidates in hour estimates left on some of the in-progress stuff that you can also give us if we had those questions?
Yeah, Acting Mayor, Councilmember Del Sandro, I have an extra slide showing kind of what those projects are as they currently sit. I don't have a really sharp hour estimate of kind of what is remaining, getting back to my statement about the art versus the science.
Yeah.
But the projects that are currently in process, you know, and I can describe generically whether they're in the beginning, the middle, or the end, I certainly can describe them in that way. But it'd be the signed ordinance update, it's the zoning code reorganizational project, which of course is a more structural shift to the code that we've been meaning to do for a few years. The missing middle housing standards, that's currently in kind of the preliminary analysis phase, but also starting to grow some engagement. We're starting to pull together some industry professionals that are looking at doing a focus group and some other things like that. And then the Lyndale retrofit rezonings, of the four of these, I would say the Lyndale retrofit rezonings is the furthest along in terms of that we've already held open houses and that we have study sessions planned for Planning Commission and Council upcoming, not too far away yet.
Sure.
So of those four, that's kind of the sequence of things.
Okay, that's super helpful. I mean, my personal opinion right now, just because I know maybe everybody else has kind of like on their list, I would be, given the fact that the potential to win the expo is going to change our South Loop district plan stuff, I would be fine striking that for now and letting that reconstitute itself on the heels of whatever is there. I mean, I know that there's expo ongoing support in here as well, so to me, it might make sense for us to consider that one. That's 345 hours already. And then to me, the SRO is another one that could be delayed until 2024. And I say that because of two things. One, it is probably one of the least desirable of the choices we have for, although it is probably one of our best choices for deeply affordable, it's also probably one of the least desirable in the sense of what we could do. And we have the missing middle housing thing in process as well, which may or may not affect that. So given those circumstances, I get to 540 hours, which means I'm actually giving them some time back in my plan. So, you know, use that wisely. But that would be my, that would be my proposal. I don't know if others have that thought, but I think you did a great job of really pulling together some stuff we can, you know, make decisions on quickly. So thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you, no problem.
Any other questions, thoughts? We'll go Councilmember Carter, then Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. So I just have a clarifying question around the South Loop development plan. When we made the switch between the HRA and the port, there was conversation among the Port Authority to do a new strategic plan, kind of do an assessment and strategic plan. Is that the same thing or is that something different?
Yeah, Acting Mayor Martin, Councilmember Carter, that's not the same thing. So the South Loop district plan is one of our five or six district and area plans, similar to like the Pan American district plan, and it's kind of the one that's currently the most outdated. It was adopted in 2012. So by comparison to some of our other district and area plans, it could use a refreshing. And then you do have the expo X factor, I guess, associated with that.
Thank you for clarifying that. So with that said, I would agree with Councilmember Del Sandro that I feel like that could be removed from the priority list, and I think it makes more sense to do kind of more of that strategic planning first and then do the plans that should fall within the strategic plan. And so comfortable with that. I'm also comfortable with the SROs being pushed off. I like that you're giving them time back. It's really gracious of you.
Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you. You know, I totally agree with that South Loop district plan. Now, the SRO piece, yeah, the only reason why I hesitate with that is, you know, we can't, you know, just like with the short-term rentals and that type of thing and the single-room occupancies, there's expertise that's on this current council. We can't be guaranteed next year that any of those folks will return. So that's one I'm a little bit more nervous with. And so I don't know if there's another piece we could pull. Or alternatively, you know, the environmental standards, you know, if it's six to nine months, you know, I don't know if we get that completely done in this year. Could we hold that over and put that, you know, to get that done in 2024? If that, you know, so that's just, that's just one council member's perspective in terms of, I don't know if that makes some sense, or maybe there's something else that we could, could look to push down the road.
Just a quick question to that point. So for the environmental standards, would that need to be done in partnership with the Sustainability Commission? And if so, would they have the capacity to add that this year or would it need to be pushed off to 2024? I mean, I would assume that we would want to have it be done in partnership.
Yeah, Acting Mayor Martin, Councilmember Carter, yes, what planning staff had envisioned with a little bit of that longer timeline associated with it as opposed to the amendments to the RS1, A, it's just, there's just more to it, there's more areas that it could go. But we also did figure budgeting in not sustainability staff time, which is probably what their work plan is most intrinsically tied to. Planning staff is going to do the lift, but we definitely do need to present to Sustainability Commission and get their feedback on it one way or the other.
So it may be an intensive process for them. It might be just like one or two presentations with feedback.
That's my guess.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yep.
Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Lohman here. I think the single-room occupancy standard, if we're looking to diversify housing options, we got to do that. I think the R1 and RS1 is a big chunk, but that's not the only thing, right? So single-family occupancy, the short-term rentals, those are all parts and pieces of this, and I think it's appropriate to consider those this year. And then maybe if we can delay the environmental standards to accommodate that in addition to pausing the South Loop district is where I would be more comfortable with.
Councilmember Del Sandro.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Okay, so since I made the original question, I can propose an alternative if I can. The reason I'm hesitant to make the environmental standards delayed is because one of the major factors associated with RS1 is its environmental standards, and I don't think, I understand they're looking at them somewhat separately, but I think unless we could guarantee that we were going to potentially look at lifting or increasing the environmental thresholds in that RS1 district, which I don't think we're saying here, then I wouldn't be comfortable with that. But I think we can get to 465 hours, which is very close to 480, if we, if we, if we got rid of the pickup window parking standard stuff. And so I'd be open to removing from this year's work plan the pickup window parking standards in the South Loop district plan update and getting to 465 hours, which is really, really close, and I'm hoping that that would be acceptable. And maybe that would work better for everybody? Would that be something we can all agree on? And does that put, I mean, can you find those 15 hours over the course of the six months?
Acting Mayor, Councilmember Del Sandro, I'm not concerned about 15 hours.
Okay, great.
Although when you said you're giving me time back, I was worried that I'm starting to look a little weary.
I know, I'm sorry.
Up here the last few.
I was giving you 60 back, and now I'm asking you for 15. It's not fair. It's not fair.
I get paid the same.
Okay, so Councilmember Del Sandro, just to make sure I've got your proposal right in my head. So the South Loop district plan and the pickup window would be the two that we are postponing for a while?
Yes, yes, sir. If we could, if we could delay those to 2024, I think we could fit these in, give or take 15 hours is what I'm proposing.
All three of them, okay. And then just my brief follow-up question on that, to Councilmember Del Sandro's point about the environmental standards informing a lot of the work that's going to be going on with RS1 and considering that's got potentially up to a nine-month timeline, I guess, does that change the sequencing of are we kicking off the environmental first and getting a running start and then using that to inform RS1 three months from now? What is?
Yeah, Acting Mayor, thanks for that question. We certainly could try and time our initial study session to kind of tackle all of those things together so that we're having a full conversation about what the interplay is. But kind of building off a comment I made in the single-two family, if we think that our environmental standards right now are insufficient, given just the changing landscape in any different number of ways, staff would still strongly urge that we not adopt district-specific environmental standards. We should have standards that are applicable to all of our low-density districts across the board. I mean, this is more staff problem, but it's also development community problem. If you just layer more complexity in the regulations, it becomes a little bit unruly too. So I recognize the timeline isn't the same, but staff would still urge council to adopt those standards, whatever tweaks you make to have them be applicable, not to just specific locations or areas of the city, but across the board.
Thank you very much. Any other thoughts on that? Yeah, Councilmember Lohman.
I can fully support what Councilmember Del Sandro is putting forward, so I don't know if she wants to make the motion or not, but let's do it.
Councilmember Nelson, did you have any?
Yeah, if nobody else has any other ideas, just toss them the pot. I knew it'd be Councilmember Nelson.
I don't have any ideas. I have a question. The pickup window one, that won't impact Europolis, correct? We approve that. This was based on an idea that they had that we thought might be applicable to other places, so that doesn't hold them up in any way, correct?
Acting Mayor Martin, Councilmember Nelson, not to my knowledge, no. It was a Planning Commission suggested item, just with the propensity of that use from the pandemic, they thought it would be wise to adopt some standards just with the prevalence of that kind of business model going forward. So no, their approvals are set.
Yeah, that's why I want to make sure, just my input is, my opinion is the environmental standards are the top priority. You know, that was one of the impetuses for the entire conversation, and I completely and wholeheartedly agree that they should apply to all single-family, two-family dwellings throughout the community in the same way, similar to like how we do stormwater and things like that. I just don't see a pathway to delineate that in the same way that we could bluff protection ordinance where you can make a definition and say this goes here. I just, I don't, I don't see the way to do that with that. And, you know, having had the forester out to my house recently in terms of trees and things like that, it's, it's an issue that I think is going to impact a lot of people with what they need to maintain on site and things like that. So in my mind, the environmental part is candidly the first and most important step.
Thank you. Councilmember Del Sandro, you want to take it away?
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Nelson, for that. I think that that's really an important thing, and if we can get in front of it before whatever is going to happen with the changes made to zoning, we would have a better chance for making sure that that is done with those sustainability and environmental standards in mind, so that makes a lot of sense. With that, if everybody's okay, I'll make the motion? Okay, great. Happy to make the motion to add the, let's see here, RS1 zoning district code amendments, RS1 zoning district rezoning, and environmental standards review and code amendments projects to the 2023 Planning Commission work plan and defer the pickup window slash parking standards and South Loop district plan update projects to the 2024 Parks, oh, sorry, Planning Commission work plan.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Del Sandro and a second by Councilmember Lohman for the motion as stated. Is there any last discussion on that one? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that carries six to zero. Excellent, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Acting Mayor Martin, if I may quickly, something I forgot to mention is what we will do is we will post the revised Planning Commission work plan to the city's website as amended on this date. So just for folks following along or want to know what's going on with the work plan, we will post a revised version based on these changes.
Excellent. And thank you, staff, again, for the flexibility. These are not small changes, and it's appreciated, so. Moving on to item number 5.2, we have our City Council policy and issue update. I'll kick it off briefly with a summary. We had a short listening session up in the room upstairs. We had a representative from Schmidt Music stop by and share some really neat news about an event they have coming up. Let me double-check the date. June 21st, from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. over at their location on Harmony Drive. It's in celebration of Make Music Day, which is recognized in thousands of cities internationally, and they're inviting folks to come down to see the new facility, to hear performances that are going to be going on throughout the day, and just celebrate music in a global way. If you have questions about that or want to check out more information, schmittmusic.com/events, and they've got a full calendar there as well. Counsel, any other items for updates? Councilmember Lohman.
So I did want to bring back that 102nd Street area that I talked about earlier today. I wanted to see if council had any interest in that. Obviously, that would be a planning thing, so it wouldn't be for this year, probably something we'd look at in the future, but I wanted to tee that up. I know there's some interest amongst residents in the area, and I do think that's an area of concern, I know, in the First District. So I wanted to raise that to see if there was any interest from council for looking at that. Staff has brought forward a number of plans in the past, and I think it's now time for us to maybe have a more serious look at that now that we're us to maybe have a more serious look at that, now that we're starting to do some work on that. Want to see if there's any interest out there.
Councilmember DeLisandro, question?
I, yeah, I, I actually, I think, I think, I don't know if, if it falls in line with what you're thinking of, Councilmember Lohman, but I know that we are, we, well, so we have the stuff that we've approved, we've also talked about the traffic calming program in general, and we've specifically talked about school zoning. And 102nd Street, I think, is one of the biggest reasons we're talking about that. So I don't, is there something over and above that that's active, that needs to be activated? If so, I'd love to hear about it, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't have those plans that have come before, so I, I would ask, if you don't mind, Mayor, the, the staff to come forward and, and talk about how those, those are some different plans. And I know some of those things have now been integrated to some of it, but there's still, you know, a larger piece that's out there.
Thank you. Director Keel.
Mayor and council, I think if the council was interested in, in kind of re-energizing potential improvements on 102nd Street, I think if there's interest in the council, we would plan on coming back to you as a discussion item, probably mid to latter part of summer, where we would kind of summarize all these kind of moving pieces and, and set the table and have a conversation about where the council might like to see that go. That would include kind of a summary of where we're at with our neighborhood traffic things, with the school zones, as well as kind of a history of what happened in the past and what the kind of the range of improvements that were discussed were and what were some of the pros and cons of each of those.
Yeah, I think personally, I would find that interesting even just to use as a, a case study for how do all these different plans and initiatives we have coming up, how would that affect a project like 102nd Street? I think that would help people conceptualize what we're doing citywide pretty well, so I'd be interested. Any, any other thoughts? Okay, excellent. Well, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, we'd love to have that conversation.
Good, so we'll, we'll work with our schedule to see where it might fit into a future council agenda, and I'll talk to our traffic staff to see how long it might take them to put that together.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much. Any other items? Councilmember DeLisandro.
So, gee, this thing is, listen to that.
Don't, don't do it again.
Well, it's not my microphone normally, it's yours, Patrick. I don't know what you're doing.
I just argue so strongly.
Mine over here is like gold. Just teasing you. Thank you, Acting Mayor. Appreciate that we can all have some levity at the end of the day. I had two items. One, I just want to again commend the staff on this turnaround around planning. And, and to make a comment that I'd like to see us bring back our boards and commissions on a quarterly basis for this kind of review. And I say that not because I don't appreciate that, you know, it takes nine miles of open ocean to turn our battleship, right? I get that. But also because we're in an environment where we, being more proactive and being more flexible is to our benefit. Being able to pivot more quickly to make these kinds of changes is a net benefit to the city as a whole. And so I, I don't know why we, even if it was just a, I'm going to get nerdy and corporate for a second, but even if it was just a scorecard that said by initiative, green, yellow, red, right, status, what's next? Like, that kind of thing on these would be in, in the same order, because like, I look at Parks master plan or the Parks Commission report, and it's in this grid, and it looks really great and everything, and then I get, you know, we see the Planning Commission one, and it's in this thing with estimates of hours and lots of text, and then, you know, we get a different view from sustainability and all this other stuff. If, if we could get a standardized, you know, dashboard or something that would give us a red, yellow, green kind of status on all their work plan items, what the status is, and, and if they, if there are open questions, that would just be really helpful for us as an executive. Like, think of it as like a QBR, quarterly business review. I, I put that out there. I don't mean to add burden, I actually think it will help us. It'll be worse to not have that or to have a second-guessing staff and commissions. So more proactive to us means we don't ask really weird questions, and that would be great. So that's number one, not for particular action right now, but I'd love that consideration. Secondly, I did ask that we kind of talk a little bit about 3.6. And the reason I asked for that was because I have a lot of good conversations with our friend, Mr. Countryman. The process for constantly having to come back to, to us to ask for exceptions to his licensing when he knows darn well that he's going to have three or four events over the course of the summer, and he's got an outdoor space and this, that, and the other thing, I feel like there's an opportunity for us to do some streamlining on this process, and I'd really like us to consider it. So, and I don't, it will benefit, obviously, Nine Mile, but it would also benefit other venues of a similar nature, right? So things like, you know, between the, between April 1st and October 31st, you give us your plan, we approve that plan, and now your license is supported for those activities, like, that kind of thing, right? Something that would make it possible. I know that in this particular case, it went down to the wire, and Bob was very hesitant to advertise his event that's coming up literally two weeks from now, because it didn't get on the agenda until tonight. And, you know, that, that just puts people in a tough position, right? So in the interest of streamlining things, I'd love to see us do something to our, to our, I don't know, liquor licenses or, you know, these kinds of venue licenses that would allow for some flexibility when it comes to special events. So I don't know if anybody else has any comments on that, but I think it would be really, really beneficial. Thanks.
City Manager?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro, you are speaking my language, and if you'll recall, the, the BTT strategic plan dashboard, our intent internally is to create, make each commission have an equal reporting dashboard for their work product. With regard to the second component, our neighbor to the west, Chan Hassan, has partnered a way to streamline the process and also take credit card payments for licenses and things. And so we just had a, a meeting with a software vendor last week to do exactly that. So I'm, you're speaking my language, and I appreciate it, so thank you.
Do, do you have a timeline for when you might be bringing that to us?
It's an internal process, so we have a, actually have a process improvement team led by City Clerk Scipione running it, so I'm, I'm confident that she will have it done before election time. Because she'll be busy doing elections.
She'll have to get it done before then. Okay, great. That, that's really helpful. Thank you very much, appreciate it. I have nothing further, thank you.
Okay, fantastic. Councilmember Moore.
I just want to say, I completely agree with Councilmember DeLisandro on both her points, especially the first point regarding coming back with quarterly business review type part. I, part of what I was speaking on earlier is that, how do we build the relationship so that this council has a good relationship with everyone that we, we work with, who are our partners, who we've trusted? So having that quarterly business review helps us have that trust, helps us understand what's going on, so that we can continue to work positively together to move Bloomington forward.
All right, any last items for policy and issue update? Okay, fantastic. Well, seeing no other business in front of the council at, yes?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I apologize for jumping in late, like, just from the standpoint of you may have received some emails regarding the Bloomington Cemetery, what we will do is, it is a concern that we've heard previously, the short answer is is we do not have an inventory of who the veterans are within the cemetery, and there is currently a staff of one who is responsible for all of the maintenance of the, of the cemetery. So what we'll do is prepare a write-up for you for tomorrow, just, but I wanted to talk about that component. And then, as if the legislative session didn't end just soon enough, we're already talking about the 2024 requests for bonding, and so staff will be pulling together a draft proposal for 2024 requests.
Hey, Mayor, just.
Yeah, Councilmember Lohman.
One thing, I wanted to just clarify for the cemetery piece, there's two components of that. There was the mowing piece, and the other piece was the flag piece. Now, my understanding with the flag part is that a group of volunteers used to go around and put those in there. I know that we were helping and assisting with that, that component of it, but we've always made sure that the public understood that that was just a volunteer piece that, you know, we assisted and helped with. I'm not sure if that same staff person was able to help out with that this year. I know we restructured the department, and that's something that, you know, when that came before, before we had mentioned that that might be something that might not continue if we, you know, if we did that restructuring. So I just want to be sure that we're really clear about, about that component, unless something has changed where we agreed to, to do that flag planting.
The Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, the written summary will address both issues.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you. Just an add-on to that, I'm, I'm wondering if the, whether the Bloomington Historical Society can help us with being the keeper of the inventory, so that no matter who is the volunteer that's doing the flag, you know, deposits and, and things of that nature, that they always know that we have a reliable resource. I don't know if there's a public-private partnership opportunity there, but I think it might be, that does seem to be a good place to consider that kind of list. I can't imagine that it changes very much from year to year. It probably grows a little bit, you know, but certainly going back to the 18-somethings, which, you know, this one in particular went back pretty far, we, we should be able to maintain an accurate record time, you know, year over year. And they're seem to be really good at that, so maybe they can help us out. Yeah, thanks.
And especially when we got so many folks in the community already doing historical Bloomington figures projects, and that's, yeah. Yeah, exactly. So, and, and I'll just very briefly, thank you, everybody, for putting up with my zigzagging, especially in the first part of the meeting, and, and the patience of folks, especially with the pride proclamation and the photo. And everybody, I made up a new title for tonight. Congratulations, Assistant City Attorney Mike Sable. I'll bring you a card next week.
Thank you.
But again, and thank you for a fantastic conversation. You made the first time at bat a lot easier for me, so I appreciate it. And at 9:50, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.